There might be a few that's not on there.
Ladonna, you want one?
Yeah.
This Ladonna or?
Hi Ladonna, I'm Delisa, you know Delisa. And here I am.
I could give you a hand out.
Okay, come on up.
She got it all.
Come on up Ladonna.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, nope.
Okay, so we have by run number and what is DOS?
Data Service. And like I said, this is just strictly the ones that had gotten turned back to the count.
That we, that it pertains to the Health Department doing the billing.
Yeah, like I said, I think there might be just a few that didn't get on here. I think it was maybe Sherry's first list, the very first list that wasn't very long. I don't think we got them on here, but we just kind of wanted to show you what we had turned, what was going on with each account. And then we just kind of color coded them.
Okay, so I'm a little bit confused. There's one with the 2017 date. Is that really the only, we only had one?
Well, see, some of them we don't have. Some of them we didn't end up with.
Okay, that's where I wanted to start, is back to the original billing date. What was that? Of 17. I know it was 17.
I don't know the original date because, I mean, we actually didn't start till 18.
No, not, yeah, let me reword that. The original date of service that you started billing. Because I know you didn't do your end of it.
They didn't have one for us.
Right.
We were kind of flying blind. They didn't know what had and had not been billed.
The last official update we ever got, the county attorney came in and just said she had looked into retroactively billing in 17 for Medicare and Medicaid and it was turned down.
Right, okay.
That's the last we know of how that.
See, what, they had to renew, their Medicare got termed before we even got on. So they were working on getting re-credentialed.
Okay, so work with me on slow here. So our EMS service lost its credentialing.
Yes.
And do you know when?
January of 18, January 6th.
January 2nd.
It's either March 2nd or the end.
8th of 18 to May 23rd.
That was in 18.
So there was a lot of those.
Okay. So then how did we not, how were we not eligible to get our retroactive billing from 17 if we didn't lose it until January 18?
I think our brief thing. That we had given from the auditor that had all the blanks and they told me that they would bill everything that had a blank.
But Jennifer O'Hare came in as the county attorney and just, it was one meeting. She just popped in and said, "I checked into doing the retroactive billing for Medicaid, Medicare, whatever," and it just.
For that period of time that we were not eligible for the.
From January through May?
Yes.
Oh, she conveniently omitted that it's because we weren't credentialed. So I don't understand.
And we didn't bill those, you just didn't get paid for them.
You did bill them. You didn't know that we weren't credentialed at that time?
That's how we found out. Yeah, right.
Oh. I'm glad we got that figured out.
Well, it just all happened just right about the same time that, you know, we got hired, then we found out.
Oh, no, I know. That's where we were, it was all falling apart at that point.
Right, right, and then we got, they got credentialed.
Did we collect anything then from what you billed for us in 17?
Yeah, we would've. We would've. I haven't, I don't have them on any of my reports because I done 19. Actually, some of those payments are probably.
So sticking with 17 then, the people that have received personal bills after all that retroactive billing was done, where is that list?
Since, since you guys had that conversation, Dawn found another pile of stuff that gave me, and in there I found quite a few of the secondary insurances for 17. So, a lot of them, of the people that got statements from 2017, actually their insurance, secondary insurance actually had paid. It just wasn't documented in QuickBooks. So.
So we were actually billing.
They weren't supposed to be billing from 2018 forward. We were going to work back from 2017.
Who, DeLisa's?
The DeLisa's, except for the ones that were blanks, which we knew had not been billed because we didn't put a name to them. Now, they could have been non-transports, they could have been patient refusals, they could have been standbys, but they could have also been ambulance runs. So all of those, they were supposed to have been being billed for. And then I asked, I believe, Delisa, at what point in time did they stop billing for the 2017s because there were still some blanks? And she said that once they started receiving the duplicate claims, that this is a duplicate claim, they just stopped on 2017.
Yeah, you guys were getting duplicate denials and then we were getting stuff saying, "Oh, this already paid, we don't owe, we don't owe."
So, okay, so what we need to know is the people that still have outstanding balances in 2017. We were asked, you know, what are we going to do with that? And it's my understanding if.
I didn't bring that.
Yeah.
I'll say it looks.
We don't have to make that decision today, but I'm trying to understand the legality of this. So if, if they had not, if we had not billed their primary and/or secondary insurance and they had it at the time, we cannot ask them to then personally financially.
Right, absolutely not.
Yeah. And we just have to wait till individually they come in and let us know.
That they had secondary insurance and we filled it.
Yeah, if they say they did, then we say, "Don't worry about it," and I'll let Derek know and we write it off.
Okay, but that is a separate issue from them not receiving bills.
Right, right, I was just kind of starting.
No, no, I'm just trying to get an accurate statement. We only understand it from a 15-minute segment on a Monday, so.
Right, right.
So if they tried to bill, so say if they had a patient that said, "I had insurance," and they tried to bill it today, it would say.
It's been past its expiration.
Yes, that's your responsibility. And so then therefore we can adequately write it off. It's the ones that have balances due, it was part of their deductible that was, I thought, was being discussed. Because no offense, some of these claims didn't get billed until 2018 or 2019, so technically they would still owe the balance due. Because they weren't being billed, they didn't start billing until May of 2018. So when they billed it in 2018 and we received payment, then we should have billed them then for their deductibles or their insurance copays or whatever.
And I have, and we have had several of those come in and pay.
I've had a lot of 17s come, or I shouldn't say a lot, but I've had several that had patient responsibilities and they have come in and paid, paid a clear off, so we're.
Okay, so this particular list that you guys provided starts in 18.
Yeah.
Is this every transaction that's unpaid in full?
This should be what we turned, gave to the Health Department.
And that was in December.
These were, yeah, we had turned these in December.
But I have people calling me, unless this particular 2017 date, which I don't know, I don't want to know. I have people calling me about their personal bills from 17. So why do we have more from 17 than what's on this list?
Well, we got, the lists that we got are what we went through.
Yeah, that was in QuickBooks. I mean.
I mean, I'll just give you an example, this one.
Sherry's put everything into QuickBooks that she has for 17.
And you probably have more for 17 than what we showed.
There's a few, yeah.
So what do we need to do about those? Because that would require an act of the commission to write it off.
And why? I'm not sure if we didn't bill it in proper time, we can't charge them for it.
Well, then I guess that's your call.
So why isn't that our, Derek's call or?
Yeah.
Well.
When they're old and delinquent, they've.
I think there was a question as to, let's just say, I, okay, I've had several people call me, you know, "I didn't get any bills and I had this ambulance thing in 2017 and, you know, I talked to my insurance and they're not going to cover anymore" for whatever reason, whether it was primary, secondary, it's expired or whatever, they paid their. So, at this point in time, then someone has to make that decision. So how do we know according to each billing whether it was, you know, Dawn had said some of those people may have personal responsibility because they did pay, they paid every, and there was still a balance after all the insurance had been collected. So how do, I mean, I guess you need to figure that out.
And we're not writing those off. I mean, we're trying to track back whether insurance got billed or not.
So this is on a case-by-case basis?
If we find that insurance couldn't be billed, then.
Yeah.
So then we as commissioners can tell our constituents, "Look, whatever your individual situation is, needs to be analyzed by the Health Department who's doing the billing and your department who's at least, you as the head are going to look and make sure that."
We want them to call us at the Health Department and then I write down, we make out a concern form and then I call Derek and let him know I have one. And then, and then between Ladonna and Derek and I, we kind of go through it. If I have questions that these guys could possibly answer, I call them.
Okay.
But at some point, if someone says, "I had a secondary and it wasn't billed," at some point, I don't know how to find it. You can't prove it one way or the other. So who needs to take the hit? We do. It's our fault.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I can't prove it. If they tell me that and we can't find it.
Medicare being elapsed, I mean.
But for the most part, we've actually, I've actually found a lot of those receipts that the secondary did get billed and the money's been deposited. And so that list has gotten a lot smaller.
Okay.
In the last week.
We've learned from this and it's not going to happen anymore right now.
So what did we come up with sort of policy for billing? We talked about a retroactive billing, according to the state, I think we have five years? Isn't that what we? But we as a county.
To go back on a patient.
He was going to come up with a policy and present it to me if I have to. And the statute of limitations is five years for collections.
So we can shorten that time span is what I'm saying. We still need to have that discussion. But then going forward to what DeLisa's had been billing, I know you had made a comment to me because we spoke on the phone, you're going to cover the expense.
If there, excuse me. Yeah, if there's something that comes up that, you know, it didn't cross over, that's not our problem. Medicare doesn't pay. I don't want to say it's not our problem, but you know, we want to have to worry about it. But like if they have a secondary insurance that we should have had and billed, yes, we will make that right. But that's kind of the thing, is trying to figure out, did they actually have insurance at the time? But we do have a patient locator that scrubs, it's almost 200 insurances. That we, if we have their social, we can go in, find out what insurance they have, which will help trying to locate it. But those will be the ones we really need to look at to see if we're going to be the ones that needs to pay for that. Because I feel part of this, you know, I do, I do feel came in our air. Now, if it's 2017 before, we didn't have it, we won't worry about it.
No, no, I understand that's a separate issue.
But from 18 on, we'll have to look at those, you know. But like the patient responsibility ones, I won't have to worry about because they're now getting their statements and everything. But if they had a secondary insurance, we didn't bill it for whatever reason, then yes, we're going to have to make that right.
And we have like one particular situation. The person was changing insurance and I believe gave the old insurance, but never ever got a bill. So he didn't know he was supposed to give you the new insurance. So whose fault is that? That's where we're at. So Sherry has put it into four different categories.
Okay.
Insurance write-offs, which are just basically insurance write-offs. Uncollectible from 17, which is $3,131 right now. Uncollectible that should have got a bill that has crossed or something.
So unbilled.
That never got billed, never got a statement from Delisa. Unbilled and statements are two different things. They keep interchanging them.
And could have been corrected had they.
They were billed, they never got a statement, they could have gotten corrected had they gotten a statement. So we just put your name there and we're at $1,291 for those people that we found so far.
Yeah.
So, and we need to have a conversation about that, but Sherry's just putting them into categories for now.
Okay.
And then the uncollectible Medicare lapse was $43,768.
So that was the lapse.
Forty three.
That was a whole price, right?
That's between January and May.
Yes. And the bill is what was billed.
That was the billed amount for Medicare lapse.
That's not what we would necessarily have gone.
Right, Medicare pays 80% of their allowed amount, not even the billed amount. So that was the total amount.
I guess, but that's not your problem. That's our lapse, so. But we just tried to put them in categories so we could see if it was 17, DeLisa's, the Medicare laps, or, or just insurance.
The third category though is what we have to have a conversation with you.
Right.
And what is the amount that you're suggesting that you're going to be responsible for out of that category?
Out of this one? Oh, and not out of this, but out of this.
Which, which one do you have?
Well, and that only is just the folks that have contacted us. That's all we've come up with so far.
So far.
Yeah, but we still have probably 50 people that haven't contacted us.
Right, well, and what we could do.
The ones in green.
Well, it's that, it's, what, I don't know, it could be around that 75 mark.
The ones in green are the one we turned over to them and they've contacted either of you guys. Do you guys have?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I highlighted those in green.
But okay, so.
Like if patients been making payments too.
Well, and if you guys could give us, well, a list of the ones that you think we owe, then, you know. So right now it looks like we're setting at almost $1,300 of our share. And like I said, I don't have a problem doing that because.
And like I said with that example, we just don't know.
Wait.
If he had gotten a statement, would he have gotten back to you? I don't know. So it's one of those.
Right.
I don't know.
Usually if they don't get a hundred and now, they weren't going to get a hundred and before.
That is the amount of the patient responsibility in that so far.
That's what we.
But I'd like to review each one of those where these guys, just to make sure.
And we can make, we can come down when you're to that point.
But it looks to me like we're going to have to pick some sort of like end date here. I mean, what, what do we do? And I know we can't project and say, "Well, if nobody answers by this date, then they're going to get written off." Because we can't just let someone wait. But how do we? I get, you know, you don't, we just don't want to leave this open-ended, I guess.
Well, I think the communication has been a lot better in the last couple of weeks. I think on our side, we just don't know the questions to ask until we figure it out the whole process. So now we know the questions to ask, maybe we can get this whittled down to some kind of a manageable, okay, now we, both sides under, agree. I mean, the fact of no statements getting sent out, that was kind of a, why are we not getting any money in? We don't think statements are being sent out.
And you mentioned that.
Yeah, and it's just, something's not right here. And to, I don't know, it's just, I think we've had a lot better communication. I don't want us to have bad relationship about this or anything. I want us to move forward. But I don't, I don't know that we're ready to say this is a group of people that we just don't know what to do with now. They're too far back, they're too far.
Okay, so you're still not getting organized. Okay, I got you.
And they need at least their three statements. Is that what you guys have agreed on, you know, before you can, you know? Then they can start, then we can look, okay.
Right.
We can, well, and I think Erin's already went through a lot of them through Payer Logic, haven't you?
And that's the one, like I said, you punch in their number and it'll give you insurances. It's not always correct, it's not always updated.
But it's at least a search.
And change of, change of addresses, that type of thing.
So this leads me to the part of the discussion I think the commission really needs to get a grip on is how are we going to get reports? Because I know I had mentioned to someone on the phone, when we hired you, which these two were not on the board, we had talked about the commission receiving ports and that, reports. And I don't know what county you mentioned that you work for, but you go in and do some sort of, I don't know.
Yeah, we do a special ones form.
Yeah, for a particular county. I mean, we need to be kept in the loop. And they had mentioned that sometimes it's the director of the department that handles giving us the report. And, you know, just like this, it has nobody's name on it. We don't know what was done. We don't know if this person had a heart attack or what. But we just see some sort of number to identify them, a date or something, and then a dollar amount. And that's really all we need to know.
Just like this.
Right, right.
You know, everybody's been concerned about what information. We just need some sort of information.
And do you want us just to, we'll send Derek as usual reports and then we'll make, you can send them their special one.
But also I think a simpler too would be in like a QuickBooks ones, a QuickBook report would maybe.
That'd be fun.
Yeah.
Who does that?
I mean.
That's the ones we have.
The ones we, what we do.
I'm not even actually talking about getting all this in organized fashion. I'm just saying.
Their monthly, monthly reports.
Yes, because it's been a year now that you guys have been working and we really haven't been updated. We haven't required that of you, but we did mention earlier today about having him come in to do monthly reports to the commission because.
Like a stats report.
Oh, yeah.
But we don't know where we are and maybe we would notice, hey, we haven't collected anything this particular month.
And that would be kind of what you'll probably get is like, excuse me, the practice analysis, it shows you Blue Cross.
That's all we need to touch.
Medicare, it shows what we billed, paid, adjustments.
We honestly only need the totals for us.
Right.
Just status so we know what's going on.
We just want to, I mean, okay.
And then if there is issues, we can identify.
Just send that to Derek and he tells us what we need to know.
Oh, sure.
Is this one you sent to us?
Exactly. We can catch on to things a little faster. We just see that, hey, something hasn't ruled in.
This was as of last week.
When you have no report, you don't have much of it.
It's more the monthly reports you send us, the column headings, I don't have a clue what they mean in some of them.
Oh, like these?
Yeah.
That's what we want you guys to come down some time.
Yeah, to help us with the column headings are, because again, billed and payment mean two different things depending on which way you're coming to.
Yeah.
That, that's kind of, yeah, we need some of that, which is what we put. We haven't had time to look at reports and.
I would almost get to that point where I'd start working on those reports and something else would happen.
I can imagine.
But we do appreciate your service. We think you guys have done a great job. I mean, we've collected, we were able to collect more than we projected we were going to collect because we had asked you to step in and I appreciate that. And we get a changeover in management of the department. So that's kind of been a juggling act on our end. So I, I do see that we had an issue. I understand. I mean, I don't think we're harboring any negative feelings. We just want to try to get it sorted out.
Oh, you got your software issues fixed, you think now?
We do, and pitches have called and they have received it.
Well, that's.
Yeah, we had our first meeting like in the internet today.
Yeah, I'd have to have 20 years, that's good.
So is the state list got your guys' phone number on it?
Yeah, it's supposed to have our phone number.
Yes, it does.
Okay, good.
Well, and I wondered about, I can't remember, it was the EMS website or the county website. It mentioned something about if you had questions about, I want to say it was the ambulance bill. You might want to change that.
Oh, to our toll free?
I think they can call us directly.
Yeah, we got a toll free.
Now, once the statements go to us, it has our number.
Not our, yeah.
But that's after.
Right.
Because we've had somebody call that said they got a statement in the mail just last week and.
Right.
Yeah, that's when.
But it has to be his number, yeah.
So then out of curiosity, and this is just a departmental question here for, since we have the Health Department and EMS here, is this going to continue that they're going to be billing and then receiving? Well, I mean, are they going to do that end of it and then you're billing his, his budget for your time?
Hours, yeah.
Is that working okay?
Is that going to continue or are we doing that?
Well, it should. It's his department's expense.
No, no.
If he hires a salary to do it, he pays us to do it.
We know, no, we know that.
I'm not questioning you billing his budget. I'm saying, is that going to continue as far as how it reaches?
Is it working okay for you and I?
Yes.
And Sherry?
Yes.
You guys are doing okay?
And it'll go smoother. It really will go smoother.
We get down to the bottom of the hill, we can start going this way.
Is that coming out of your salary line item or is that a contractual expense?
Contractual.
Probably contractual.
So you might want to keep an eye on that because we weren't doing that in the past. And I think we passed a budget without you that just was mirroring what we had done prior.
If I change the website, do you want me to direct them to a certain?
Derek, how much is that?
You might just.
Do not know how much I have.
How many hours you've been billing with that?
It varies. It was more this time. I don't know.
It was quite a bit this last month.
I know it's going to vary.
There's going to be a little overtime in that too.
Well, it'll be calmed down. Once we get all this issue fixed, it'll calm down on the regular billing.
We're praying that it does.
It will. It will. Once you get everything back to the roll.
Yes, sounds right.
Here, there are a couple of runs through average every month.
Uh, a month?
Yeah, or a week or whatever.
We do four, we did 400 last year, 380.
400 a year, so that's about.
382 was.
Yeah, 382 was the including number.
You better do about, almost just one or more than one a day.
His 30 runs, but that includes standbys.
Standbys.
And that's not just ambulance emergency situations. That includes everything they've done.
And transfer, transfer.
That includes pushing them up off the floor and all that.
Right, everything. I'm just curious how many times you got responded out.
Ball game stuff.
Yes.
That's exactly right.
Yes, that's included in that number.
Okay.
So I just got a copy of this contract today that you made in May of 18. And I guess back here is a question and answers and it says, "Will you assist with collections?" So, but you don't turn them over to the collection agency?
Well, I want to talk to you. Well, we do for some, but that we need to, we need to be told or whatever. Are we turning them? I mean, we won't decide who goes to set off. We'll present a list to Derek. He'll go through it and we can turn them to set off once that's done.
I didn't know what was in the contract. That's what I'm saying. If we're supposed to, you send three bills, they go to us, we send three bills and then we decide they're going to set off, we tell you and you do it or we put them in set off? That's what I don't know.
We can put them in set off. But why would you send them six statements opposed to just our three? You know, we send three, the one, you have first statement, second, and then your third with a threat you, well, do we, we don't threaten them till after they go to Derek, right?
Now, the third one says pay within so many days.
Yeah, or, and then, and then we go, we could go with Derek, go through, see which ones he wants us to go ahead and turn to set off. And yes, we can turn them to set off.
But I think the reason why the commissioners chose not to go with that route the last time was because then once it goes to set off and set off pays, you're paying set off the percentage and DeLisa's the percentage for collecting.
Right, right.
Versus if we do it ourselves, then we're collecting 100%.
Right, right, because I would still.
I think your contract needs to say who's doing what, not.
On the set off, the collection end.
Wait, but, okay.
I'm fine with doing it. I've just, I don't want to double.
We didn't have you in the mix, I don't think, at that time. So if you're okay with doing that, then we may as well, once we have it in-house, keep it in-house.
Okay.
I mean, instead of passing it back to you after we've already paid hours within our departments to work on that project, there's no.
So I'll add that to the contract and we've already, we've already signed the business associates agreements with everybody.
Right, so, and I, I don't, I, like I said, I just had a chance to look over this right before lunch. There might be something else.
Well, there probably.
Are you available to visit while you're in town?
Oh, yeah.
Are you guys available to go to the Health Department?
Yeah.
Because I think from our end, once you guys, then there's nothing really we need to do. I just, thank you for coming. I was kind of delegated the task.
Hey, hey, that was fine.
And if you guys have any more issues, don't, feel free to contact us, so.
Okay.
And Derek and Ladonna too on all this billing stuff. Because we had a billing issue for a long time and that was an issue. But no, you guys are fixing it now. That was great.
Well, the statement thing was.
Well, that happened. That happened, so.
I know.
Longly.
Still on me. But I really appreciate it. But you guys do have time for us to swing in?
Sure, sure. That'd be great.
Well, well, thank you for being patient and understanding and.
Thank you.
And we'll see that you get your reports monthly then.
Yeah.
Totals.
Like a stats report.
Just a break, yeah.
That way too, we can compare it to what Derek's got, what she's got. That way if there's a gap somewhere, we got to say what's going on.
Right, right.
That's all.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
That concludes it. If you've got the problem solved, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
That's what Medicare and Blue Cross Blue Shield dictate to write off.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what the insurance writes off.
Medicare dictates.
From the bill to the payment. Okay, so that's like the 20%.
Yes.
It's not.
Yeah.
And do we have to approve an actual write-off figure then, the commission?
I don't know about that.
Can we move forward with this number or just wait until you?
Wait, well, I would wait till we get.
Because we have to have like documented proof for the auditors to balance out to the.
Yeah, the auditors.
Well, and this will help us look on a projection as to how, where we were projecting what was billable income versus where we collected.
But we couldn't claim it and write it off.
Well, when the auditors come, we're just going to have to have a conversation about what if we can't prove?
Right. You got, they're going to.
Then what happens?
I'm sure they got a way to deal with that. But we got to have all our numbers right for them to know what we're doing.
So basically, we just want to make sure that there's at least a monthly contact between you and Derek. And Derek, you're bringing that information to us on the surface. I mean, we don't need to have any of the details per se, but just to watch what we're collecting and.
I said that this morning. You have them on your email.
Awesome. And you're going to put them on the website for the contact?
I changed Hannah's because it's already done.
Oh, awesome.
Then we can base.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like I said, I have.
I'll keep this in.
Yeah, you keep that.
I'll just keep it if you want.
I gave mine to Sherry.
Okay. All right.
Well, okay, well, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for coming.
I'll be upstairs. So Lisa and Erin and Delisa, I guess.
Where do you guys have it?
Be careful of my delfos.
Oh, delfos.
We're not even.
Oh, your cars. Minneapolis country nearby.
Oh, right, right.
You have written any letters to the president lately, have you?
Now, one guy did, didn't he? He got trouble.
So we'll probably talk about that today. You can give them to me if you want, so that way you don't bring them to an open session.
You'll be careful.
Yeah.
Well, thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
I just hope they caught.
Have a good day.
You too.
True.
Thanks, yeah.
Then I'll come to the Health Department.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Well, we have Sean Eskel coming in at two. It's about a half hour. We want to.
I haven't seen you.
Any other business you need to deal with?
So maybe we can get somebody from Delfos to contact President Trump and say he might be more attractive. He'd be shaved as heck.
Well, somebody did it. Didn't somebody have a death rap?
I don't get it.
Yeah, but the little girl who suggested that, um, Abraham had a makeup beard was a little girl from Delfos.
Delfos, we play in our reenactment area. That's a big deal, that little girl. And if you go up the highway, there's a great big sign on the highway.
One time, there was a, a president, or President Lincoln did not have a beard and this little girl from Delfos said that she thinks that he would be a more likable.
Oh, 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 Delfos here and that's where that person came out.
So that's why he made that comment and I think it went over, woo.
Well, they call it.
Oh, good.
Well, we have time here for shotgun.
How do you spell Delisa's?
Do we have anything else we wanna discuss right now? Any other business? Have we gone through all of our, uh?
Well, from the peanut gallery, we're actually curious. How much money are we actually looking at that could possibly be, uh, collected from seventeen and eighteen?
Collected, we don't know, but the write-off total, the write-off so far is a hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay.
But that, and that includes a hundred and ten of that is the Medicare, Medicare, Medicaid write-off twenty percent that we're not ever gonna get.
Okay.
So, forty, the forty-three thousand number of the uncollectible because of the lapse, that's also probably eighty percent of that would be, should have been collected.
So there were like six people here who are being paid, um, for a forty thousand dollar collection?
Well, it's more than that. It's that all these individuals in our county, which right here is seventy people almost. If they had an incident within a certain timeframe, okay, maybe their insurance got billed and then that was it. They never got their secondary insurance billed. So then we turned around and our health department sent them a bill that said, hey, you still owe three hundred dollars. And they called us like, wait a minute, why do I owe three hundred dollars? You never billed my secondary insurance. So, Delisa's third party that they contract with had a software system where it wasn't mailing out the bills. So we have seventy to a hundred people that either didn't get their secondary insurance billed, didn't get a personal bill, like maybe their primary and secondary insurance did get billed and then they owed twenty-five dollars. Then we sent them a statement that says, pay this twenty-five dollars or go to collections. They're like, wait a minute.
I didn't even know about that.
There was almost a, it wasn't really a threat, so it's not Landon's fault, but it just said at the bottom thirty days and then it goes to collections. She figured, well, yeah, I'm gonna send that to him. They've already received three statements and we've not heard a peep. But all of these people said, no, we never received a statement. Whether it was the balance due that the insurance could have paid, that the insurance wasn't gonna pay, or they didn't have insurance at all and it was all personal expense. They didn't even get a bill until our own health department did. So Delisa's owes us back pay from the collectible amount of thirteen hundred dollars as of right now that never got sent to the people's homes.
So another question I have is since we've got the health department doing the secondary stuff now, is it possible that we can move them into being the actual billing department for the, for the EMS department instead of contracting it out with Delisa? Is it something that they can actually take over eventually?
No, because it's coding.
They can code? They don't do coding in their own office? Since they're, since, so they're.
They aren't coding anything. They are literally getting a list from Delisa's like this.
My question is, is don't they already know how to do, um, coding because of their?
They know how to code for what they do, but what they do are shots and, um.
But it's something that they could.
They don't even do that. They don't do prescription bill. I mean.
So, so is it something that they would be willing to take over?
Someone would have to wanna go to school.
Cause what, what's our contract with Delisa?
Um, a percentage of our collection. So, I just saw the pay, the payables. I had, did I file that yet?
How many payables have we paid this week?
Our, yeah. Where did I see that?
Yeah, we just did it there Friday. Mr. Krack, do you have any?
Yeah, I just have the financial report to turn in for the senior center.
Okay.
That's all I have, if you'd like.
Yeah, come on, yeah.
We have, we have time here before Sean Estrel.
It doesn't take me that long. I'll be so short.
No, we got time now and.
Uh, per the requirement of the mill levy for the senior center, I have the report, uh, from our senior center.
Okay.
For the year of twenty nineteen. I have a, that is a check register on that. And I'll get one for Dawn too then. And then this is a transaction detailed report from the senior center. And if you have any questions on it, I'm the one to fill it out. I'm not treasurer, but I entered the data.
How's your building coming over?
Which one?
Well, you moved into that, you were gonna move into that.
Yeah, we got to. We are, but we've got the roof done. That was thirty-some thousand for the roof.
Yeah.
And I believe we spent eighteen thousand on the mortar on the walls ready with some grants. It's come to a halt right now because we're pursuing other grants.
Okay.
And so.
Are you still operating all that?
Yeah, we are, we are.
Running water into you?
No, it's a, it's a big hole.
Yeah. Any schedule for moving down this street?
Well, we wanna get the interior done before we do that. If our grants come in, if the grant, we're gonna make a grant request to Dangy Hanson. If we end up with half what we request, we'll try to do the front part and get it done so we can move over there and then pursue the back. Uh, we're working on that grant. I've got about two to three other grants we're looking at also.
The, this repeat, uh, water bill, the same amount, is that because they do a write-off for you?
No, it's because, actually, to be honest with you, we need to make.
You don't even hit the minimum.
We need to make a request to the city. Some point in time, the senior center said they didn't want it free. The city will give us the water free.
But is that?
It's just because they.
You're not even hitting the minimum, so that's the minimum.
That's why it's exactly the same thing.
Wow.
And I think it's three thousand gallon, I think.
Okay.
And so, and also I can tell you that, uh, I failed to bring that paperwork. Our president went through the tally of those who come through the door and signed in, but I remember the numbers. For last year, sixteen hundred adults had checked in through the year at various times and a hundred and fifty-eight under age sixty. And that was without a meal program. So, activities, good. And another activity, just to let you know, the senior center does have a projector. Last night, the seniors got together and watched Super Bowl on it. Eight by twelve foot screen on the wall, so.
Adult beverages and chip?
What's that?
Adult beverages and chip?
Uh, it'd be called seltzer, adult beverage.
I probably brought potluck. I know their food is really good.
Yeah, last night was finger food and I was there from two o'clock to nine o'clock because I was the one who's setting the projector up front. We had issues getting connected, but. Anyway, that's the complete detail of our, uh, mill levy account and, uh, there is funds available in there yet, but, uh, we've depleted our private account pretty much due to trying to get the building up and condition next door. And we're hoping we have enough time that we can move to the new one before the old one goes down.
Yeah. Any, you got any legal stuff going on with that collapse of the roof in your wall?
We have sent a notice to them and they're not doing nothing. And, and the city can't do nothing.
Wait, could you explain to him what Lincoln just did though?
Yeah, uh, Lincoln doesn't have a code as such, but they have a, do have a requirement. Your building has to be safe. And so they can send the inspector out and it's a local guy and he decides it's safe or unsafe. And if it's unsafe, you have to make it safe or they will let a contract to demolish it and charge you taxes. And downtown Lincoln, we had three buildings on the north side of the street that were of concern. Boudreaux's Plymouth Plumbing, the old bar and the, uh, old bakery. And the guy that owned the bar, it was not, you could not save it. The roof was gone, all that stuff. And so the city is in the process of letting contract to demolish that. Boudreaux, even though he had a fire in there, has managed to stabilize the walls so that it's not unsafe, it's safe, which doesn't mean it's usable. And the guy that owns the bar next to our senior center, uh, has got a bad roof and so we have water running down the wall between the senior center and him. And so they're gonna have to do, what, seventeen thousand or some number of damage to the wall to fix, which doesn't solve the problem because that old building's still there. So, the, I bet you Sylvan, the city probably has that same sort of thing. If it's an unsafe building, you either have to fix it or they're gonna get rid of it.
Yeah, we have talked to them. One of the things is they can't get grant information, grant money supposedly for businesses to demolish and Sylvan.
A commercial, a commercial. But, I mean, it's my understanding they weren't doing anything because they don't have a code. If you could deem it uninhabitable or whatever the.
Safe and unsafe, that's their switch.
I mean, I know Sylvan doesn't have the money to necessarily demo it, but something needs to be done eventually because we are gonna have dilapidated and crumbling buildings right there. That's, that's the.
And the big thing about our building is the senior center and the old bar that's next to it's collapsing, that was one building at one time. And so the wall is not really, a totally, totally supportive wall.
Yeah.
In fact, we'd have a proppant up in the basement.
I've got another story to tell you. Uh, we did it in Lincoln for a long time. Carly, uh, set it up, Arivo has a store. And she got a bunch of volunteers and we all gathered around an old building that, that they led it legitimate, the owner let us tear it down and haul it out to the trash dump. And it was all volunteers. We had guys with skid steers and, and excavators and dump trucks. My part was I, uh, had a trailer and a hired man. We haul little stuff off to the dump, but I got a whole bunch of dirt out there. And so, I'm gonna have a basement. They go out and get my dirt haul and fill it up. At, at, no cost to the guy on the ground, except he had to pay some, you know, storage fees out in the, in the dump. But, uh, if you want, I talked to Carly and see how she set it up and what she did because, you know, you get a bunch of volunteers, you can have that building out of there. We were doing five or six in a day's time in the summertime.
So out of curiosity, when the building's out and the lot's empty, does the city take the lot down?
It depends on how they, uh, and she can tell you the ins and outs. On some of them, the city was buying the lot and the building. And that way, it belonged to the city. And then when it was done, their agreement was that the owner would buy the lot and the empty lot back.
Okay, and they probably more than likely try to sell it back.
And it, yeah, and it, it worked out very well. We did that for a number of years until somebody in the city decided they could do it better than we did and they did one building and they quit. Uh, Concordia on their main street has some buildings that have come out years ago and you know, you leave a gap in the tooth, but they, but some really nice city interior parks and slides and all that stuff. So, uh, I would recommend, talk to Carly and see what she did, how she set it up.
Carly, again.
Arivo, she runs the, the clothing store here in town.
Okay, the Sears clothing.
Yes, Sears clothing, yeah.
Okay, okay.
She used to be a Sears, but, yeah, she, uh, talk to her because there's volunteers around.
I think I really screwed up.
That's right.
I made the distributions of the council on aging for the fifty thousand like we have every other year based upon my spreadsheet, but that's probably not what we wanted to do, right?
No.
Or are we taking council on aging expecting them to disperse it to the senior centers?
You better for.
I was looking back for through the minutes.
We spent thirty thousand last Friday.
We didn't approve budgets because we didn't have enough to cover all three budgets. We.
I, yeah, I was just looking. I was like, oh my God, I know, I.
Yeah, I, out of habit, um, what, what did we do?
We approved fifty, we approved fifty thousand for.
For services for the age.
Yeah, for everything.
Say how to break it apart.
That's aging and senior centers.
But the combined budgets of Sylvan and Lincoln were greater than the total disbursement, so we never really, yeah, January thirty-first.
That and the budget, how to split it out, so.
So do they have to write us a check?
Um, well, I just sent her a text in the hoping, cause she would've just got it.
Who's her?
Carly today, Becky in the mail.
Oh, for council on aging.
Yeah, and then.
Those are thirty thousand.
Well, thanks for catching that.
Yeah, you're right.
We only have thirty thousand Friday. I signed it, you were right.
Well, sixty percent, but what I'm saying is they might not.
But she's saying, they gave it to the wrong entity.
Should've went to where? Senior Center?
We didn't ever designate.
I, I should've held it because you never did.
We didn't designate, yeah.
You never did say, I'm sorry.
Well, what did we do with the budget? We just did fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Cut it fifty to fifty thousand.
But what were the budget requests? Um, thanks for catching that, Dawn.
I might make one other comment talking about the budget on our part and everything too is when we get to the new building, we will have additional services we can provide that we can't in the old building right now. And so.
I actually had a thought, you know, what if the senior centers paid to belong to the council on aging and got services from them that way? Because every bit of my involvement in the past with the council on aging was the council on aging delegating money to the senior centers. Then they really provided services to the senior centers as they deemed them receivable. If, you know, we pay to belong to the Kansas Association of Counties, for that, we get resources. We pay to belong to K Camp. For that, we get resources. We can call them, we can ask them to do things for us, yada, yada. I mean, maybe your senior centers ought to pay the council on aging to belong to them and they can provide services to you because I think at this point, we still have a huge bias. The council on aging offices in one of the senior centers. So how much more are they serving one senior center than the other? You know, what if Beverly wants a senior center? You know, really, those groups should be requesting money from the commission. And then if you wanna belong to the council on aging to receive their services, then you pay for it.
One thing too.
I don't know what their services are other than.
The commissioners make a payment to the council of aging in Manhattan.
We already do.
I know, it's what I'm saying. You're already doing that and that's.
Right, and they serve our area, so there is nothing, you know, now, the argument is that at least there's a person that someone can personally have a conversation with here on Main Street and get any kind of information that they would else, elsewhere.
Like a referral.
Yeah, yeah, but to.
But not the same services.
Right, I mean, I still have a problem with the, it seems to me that the council on aging's only purpose to exist right now is to be an employer. Um, and so. It's, and they're also employing by happenstance the same exact person as the Lincoln senior center is employing. So again, we have that recirculation of money, you know, we're paying, two different times, we're paying our seven and a half percent employer tax for the same person. You know, why not add it together and, I don't know. I mean, it does seem kind of interesting.
Well, I can add, Becky was at our meeting last month and, uh, she is very instrumental. I would like to see her come more often. And, uh, if the Sylvan senior center pays them the LCCA dues or whatever you call it, then it'd be nice to see her maybe there, uh, you know, two days a week or over a short period of time or whatever.
But that's what I'm saying. Right now, if the commission is paying that, then they can do as they please.
Yeah.
If you pay to be a member, if, I don't care if a church pays to be a member of the LCCA so that they can get the LCCA to attend one Sunday a month after church, they have a, a meeting where that person can then distribute information or whatever. Anybody could potentially belong to the LCCA and have input on their board or go to their meetings or get access to their financial records. But right now, if the commission just keeps paying for them to exist, who do they have obligations to? The commission. And we've never seen them at a meeting except for to complain about finances.
She pays the mileage for, for Becky to go to Sylvan.
Who does?
The council on aging.
Well, they, she supports you. That's part of her job, supports the O and M like it.
Yeah, but that's exactly what I'm saying if.
But that's her job. They've hired her to do that.
But we are paying the bill.
We are. We're paying senior centers too. So you can have senior centers give money back and forth to the council on aging, council on aging give money back for senior centers. All the same money coming from.
The council on aging has asked Becky to have a calendar that shows what her hours are because there, several of the members on the council have asked to make it document where you are and what you're doing because it does seem like it's more of this Lincoln senior center.
Well, of course it is naturally just because they're, she's there. She already has a job there. She's there every day. I mean.
It's supposed to be split up for days.
No, there's more, there's more people in Lincoln.
That's what they're asking.
Well, there's gonna be more people in Lincoln. She's gonna give them time to Lincoln.
Every month for this service.
Sylvan did, Sylvan's all by kind of on her own. You got Beverly and Westfall and Barner that all come to Lincoln, so you have all these, you got three fourths of the population in Lincoln going to Lincoln senior center and four fourths going to Lincoln.
Well, we have significantly cut the amount of taxes that we're collecting to give to that group altogether.
I know.
Whoever they are, whoever's participating wherever. We've gone from a hundred and twenty thousand down to fifty thousand, so we've cut it by more than fifty percent.
Probably too much, probably, but, but whatever.
I can see the point where is if.
The idea of that much salary coming out of that amount.
I can see the point where the commissioners would disperse money directly to the senior centers and the senior centers would then pay to the LCCA.
That's what I'm saying. If you want their services, you pay for them.
And then the senior centers too.
Right.
Because then they're actually working for the senior centers rather than.
I don't see no benefit in that.
How much does the area agency provide now? How much does the area agency provide and to whom?
I don't, I think you'd have to ask Becky.
Becky, Becky has sent, she has sent emails, although the last one I read was about the senior center, not the LCCA, but.
The council on aging out of Manhattan, all of those services are free.
That's the area agent, though.
That's the area agent, oh, well.
Well, we pay, we pay them and to give it to them. They give us food to cook and stuff, right?
No, no, okay, let's clear this up one final time, no. The meal program is called Friendship Meals.
Okay.
And it is only through the Lincoln Senior Center. There is not another entity that participates in that. Just because Becky's employed by both does not mean that the LCCA is any part of the Friendship Meals. Now, they have.
So the money we give to Manhattan, what does that get? Will come here back for that?
That, that pays for the Friendship Meals out of Manhattan.
Well, there you go.
Lincoln does not pay for the Friendship Meals.
Well, there you go. The council on aging, on the Manhattan, pays for Friendship Meal which comes back to us.
No, 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 that's our money we've been paying. They don't pay that, we pay.
Yeah, we're paying them and it's coming back to us. It's all money go, here's fifty bucks, give me back fifty bucks.
And we only get a percentage.
It's not paying for all of it.
No, no, we're getting way more than that, cause they're paying for the actual, uh, food, right? They're paying for the delivery and the, and the food product.
Manhattan.
Which is way more than the three thousand dollars we pay.
Delivering it.
Well, that may be true. I'm not saying it's one, I'm not saying it's one for one.
A small percentage of that from what is asked by the people that are taking the meals.
Well, because they have to pay three fifty or whatever it is.
But normally, they're not even paying three fifty.
Does not the area agency pay part of the cook's salary?
They pay the, they pay minimum wage.
Minimal seven fifty.
The Lincoln Senior Center pays, it's supposed to be only minimum.
No, 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 uh, may I correct, the, the area agency on aging pays minimum wage for the office person, the desk person, one cook and an assistant.
Out of the Lincoln Senior Center, not the council of aging.
No, 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 but that, no, they get a paycheck from the state because that is area agency on aging.
Not the council on aging.
That's right.
Those three individuals.
Are paid out of Manhattan at seven twenty-five.
From the state, they get minimum wage.
Pays them in addition.
The Lincoln Senior Center gives them a paycheck for three dollars an hour to supplement the minimum wage, from the way I understand it. And it's been like that for a long time. That's not, that has nothing to do with the council. The only thing the council on aging has ever done with the food is transport it to Barnard for the lady that drove the meal and her daughter.
Mileage reimbursement.
And with mileage reimbursement to take their own food home.
Who has, uh, taken over Teresa Richards' job?
No one.
Becky.
Becky, Becky.
They changed it from full time.
The certification to do any of that, so you're still asking for Schick and.
She's not Schick certified?
No.
That job is paid for a lot by area agency.
People on the council maybe are asking why.
We have a Schick, like a lady come from Manhattan free.
They do that for free.
Because it's, she's basically getting paid to be a secretary for the LCCA. They are a board, that, that would be like us paying for the hospital board to have a secretary.
And we're saying for the, that number of hours that there are and for what there is, that seems like large.
Basic feed that Manhattan gives you, they don't get any more money.
And that's, and that's up to the senior center.
Part of the laws of the council of aging out of Manhattan is that it's, is that it's a minimum wage position. So you've always been paying more in Lincoln County and other counties ask that. Or in fact, they assume you're a rich county.
Well, they assume that we wanna cook.
Wow. Well, maybe that's why we can't keep a restaurant open in Lincoln.
Another thing is why there aren't meals at Sylvan is because it takes so many meals, but also, uh, as far as transporting to the Wilson, Sylvan, you gotta have two meals per mile before they'll pay for that.
Which is why, and that brings me to, yes, council, not council on aging. Flint Hills will pay to get meals to a secondary location. But you have to have two per mile, so if you're going.
If, if you're going fifteen, you gotta have thirty miles.
You gotta have thirty meals, yeah, well, it's okay, so you gotta have thirty meals to service Sylvan.
Yeah.
So we can't do that, cause they're not gonna get thirty. So instead, the council on aging decided to pay mileage to someone to haul two or three meals to Barnard, like I said, two meals on average for themselves and one other person. But that has nothing to do, the LCCA, council on aging does not administer or have anything to do with the meals program. That is all through the Lincoln Senior Center, always has been.
I know.
Always will be, because they own the building with the registered and certified kitchen. That's what it has to do with. It has to do with the kitchen, and then they subsidize the pay for those three employees.
And it doesn't even have to be a senior center.
No, it can be a restaurant.
Senior center, it could be in the center of the county of the Westford Community Center, for example, if they would choose to have their.
Ellsworth County in their wisdom cooks the food at Wilson, then they truck to the Holly Room.
Right, yeah, and I think they have quite a few meals. They, they put out like, uh, ninety to a hundred a day.
Yeah, it's a lot. I've been down there several times to eat with them.
The other thing too is, uh, on the meals program, when I was on the LCCA, also that, uh, originally the state paid for the appliances.
Bought them.
Bought them, and then they cut that off, so any appliance.
Whenever they wear out, you know, whenever they wear out, then the seniors are, or whatever.
It was a one-time buy then.
Responsible and pay the new ones. And the council of aging had been the ones that have been buying them for the Lincoln Senior Center.
Well, the county got money from us, if they can do it there.
Why would they have?
Well, we've, we've been paying as a county the overhead for both senior centers to exist. I mean, and Sylvan did it for a long time on a string. And Lincoln did it with us paying the overhead to house that meal program. So the citizens weren't necessarily paying for the food, but they were paying for the electric and the gas to do everything that had to do with that meals program the whole time. So there's where the discrepancy is in how the funds were getting distributed. Now, when the commission was giving all of the money to the LCCA, they were creating rules by which you had to comply for them to give you money. It should be the opposite. It should be if they wanna provide a service, then you can pay them to, to request their services. You know, I mean, it's nothing more than a resource center. They don't physically provide anything. I mean, if you need your, if you need your feet done because you're eighty years old and can't do your own toenails, then they're supposed to tell you that you can call the health department.
No, they do more services, senior center, than you'd think. They have a little casual account, you know, things going on.
Who?
Becky does.
Come over here and do that.
For the senior center?
Yeah.
I, I'm not talking about senior center, I'm talking about the LCCA.
Well, they coordinate together, that's what's so confusing about this, who's responsible for what? That's the thing, you got, you got a depart- LCCA does one function and the senior center does the other, but they really merge together and work together.
There's your distribution for twenty nineteen.
For the budget request?
No, that was last year's distribution.
Distribution for the senior centers. I don't know what the budget request was.
Well, we gave them to the, yeah, directly to the senior centers and gave very little to the council on aging last year because we just.
Well, the council on aging had had a hundred thousand dollars surplus.
Yeah, they had a surplus, that's why we did it.
And the big thing too is they're supposed to assist the senior centers and activities and things like that or whatever.
Well, they're supposed to assist the seniors.
They're all the same people, most of them, they all work together. It's like you're on this park and then you're on this group and you're on this group too. And that you're supposed to be separate. Well, you're not.
Well, I won't say that, I'm just saying.
Well, I'm not saying you personally, I'm talking about, to anybody.
We have a, there's a service there that we're not getting, we really need. Uh, Julie Gritten did it, and then Teresa took over from her, and they're well-trained, uh, and good people, and seniors from walking off the street to Teresa and Julie, you're the one who we were supposed to be sitting in there, and ask a senior-related questions, and God knows there's enough of them with all the government interference in our lives. The council on aging doesn't do that, that's not their job. I don't know what their job really is, but the information that Teresa and Julie put out is very specific to their job, and that's funded by the area agency. And we really need that, and I think we need to do something about that. If we had somebody sit on the area agency board, they could take care of that, I think.
Yeah, and I think that's why a director and, a director that, uh, serves both senior centers or a director in each senior center, that we'd benefit from that. And as far as Sylvan, you know, if you have one director and they spent some time in Sylvan, percentage time versus Lincoln.
Teresa did that for a while, didn't she?
You have to have somebody that's certified to do that.
But that's the deal, yeah. We need to get some tests.
Well, no, but, but Sylvan scheduled the gal from Manhattan to just come out here and spend a whole day, which it did.
Yeah, but that's, that's informational shit. If you have somebody that walks into the question on their tax return or a question on their Part D walking off the street, we're supposed to have a person sitting in there in that office that can answer those.
No, you're supposed to give them the number of the person who does that. Or call them for them and say, I can help you schedule it. But there's no reason that the senior center can't do that. The senior center has its own receptionist getting boosted.
The senior center, it's the area agency on aging that had that job sitting in there that we have not filled. Has nothing to do with senior center.
She is there, actually. They made it from full-time to part-time.
No, wrong person. This, this is Teresa Richards' job, and Julie Gritten for her. They work for the area agency on aging, and they're supposed to sit in here as part of the area agency and provide information to walk-in seniors of any question you have.
So allow me to ask you a question. Who does the Lincoln County Council on Aging employ at this time?
I have no idea.
Becky, Becky Rathbun.
Becky Rathbun?
Yeah.
Okay.
But she can't do the job that the area agency would have done.
She's been working on things to get up to it, I don't know.
But wait a minute, but that's not even, that's not even the, if you listen, but if you listen to the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, they told us, actually Julie Gritten told us at this table, maybe you weren't here. The job of the council on aging is to recruit Schick volunteers. That's their job.
But this isn't volunteer.
They never did that. They paid one.
Paid a person.
They, the job of the council is, and, and we can get Julie on the phone, cause I've had an extensive meeting with her personally about what is the role. In Mitchell County, I believe it's Mitchell, the guy who actually does that doesn't get paid, or he.
The president is the volunteer.
Right, so we should have people on that board, they're either Schick certified, or the board should know that their job is to recruit people to become Schicks.
All kinds of people in Lincoln County who were Schick trained. Kathy Nielsen, I think she was with the 4H or whatever county.
Vicky Ternock and Sylvan got certified and they, and the council on aging wouldn't put an ad in the paper for her to, to, to say that there was another person available in Sylvan. That's when they were paying a full-time person to do it.
Five to seven people who were Schick trained, so whatever happened to those lines?
Have you heard from Sean?
Yeah, the city's too many to tell.
That's fine.
I don't know.
How could he run late? We run things on time.
Volunteer, they don't get paid.
I know, I have the budget request.
Tried to double due and actually go do a visit while he was here.
Probably filled my lagoon or something out there.
Do you have any more questions for me?
No, no, we just got to.
Okay, well, we need to take care of this disbursement issue because it's, what, thirty thousand?
Yeah, it was thirty thousand. They do have the check, so we'll go get it and we'll void it.
It hasn't been deposited yet?
No.
No.
Praise the Lord.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm changing that spreadsheet right now.
What, your template?
Yeah. And probably what you guys should do is when you're doing the budgets and you set that dollar amount.
Approve the, the separation of it.
We should separate that, so we don't have to discipline up now, you know. As we ran into this last year.
Mr. Chairman.
Question here.
Yes.
Oh, it's not Alexis, it's.
Yeah.
Um, back when you were making these decisions, and I believe it was Alexis that raised the issue that we're supposed to be, the mail levy money is supposed to be for all the seniors in Lincoln County, not just senior centers. And the idea was brought up at the time that any agency or entity that served seniors could come before the county commissioners to ask for monies out of that mail levy. That's where the last thing was when you were talking about money distribution.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I think a wonderful idea would be to have the council on aging serve as the web fund committee where they review grant applications. So if we give ten thousand dollars to the LCCA, they can meet once a month and receive applications from people who would like money to do some sort of senior activity or a senior improvement of some sort, and then, um, provide or deny grant applications. They, they could easily perform that function, and.
But they or one person, that's kind of.
No, the board, the board. I mean, the web fund is, what, five people?
Yeah, that, I think four, five.
Oh, the web fund, got it.
No, I, I'm likening it to the web fund where.
They got a board, they got, web council on aging has people to board. They could do that.
That's what I'm saying. We could, we could easily say, here's ten thousand dollars, take applications all year long or meet quarterly and distribute this money. You know, what, what the prior commission did was say, here's a hundred thousand, now create your own obstacle course for somebody to come and get, get this money from you. I mean, there's a huge difference there, um.
My point was like the board or the employee of the board, because.
I don't see why that board needs an employee. That's like the hospital board having an employee.
Make that clear, because the, the board has passed on lots and lots of decisions to the employee.
But that's what I'm saying. It's like us letting the hospital employ, hospital board employ a secretary for themselves. Yeah, we gave the hospital board the obligation to run the hospital. They have an employee at the hospital as far as the administrator, but they don't have a hired secretary for themselves. And that's what the LCCA did. They hired themselves a secretary. None of the board members fielded phone calls. They established an office and they met every month and said, yes, pay the electric bill.
Do they take care of their treasures and it's, that's kind of.
They're still not writing their own minutes or doing their own treasury reports? The treasurer isn't doing their.
Treasurer didn't even write the check, they just signed a blank check.
Still, to this day?
No, no.
Oh, I know about them, I know.
Officers and maybe they'll, I don't know.
Yeah.
And the big issue was back then for us was, it was all money every month. It wasn't really about services.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. Not one board member actually fielded a phone call to, to talk to someone about Schick or to.
Two months ago, we had a board member who was, had brought a couple or a couple in the county that felt they needed services and the agency on aging was there, and they had to instruct them that, hey, we already have these services. You need to be telling these people about the services, not panning out money to certain individuals. So my, I guess my point is, is who gets on boards is really, really important. They have to have some training and knowledge in the area they're representing.
But this fifty thousand like we, uh, budgeted isn't, does it all have to go to Lincoln Council on Aging? We can do it to anywhere we want, right?
Well, we.
And you don't have to give it all out.
No, I know, I know, we did last year, we did part of the time. I'm saying, we gave some Sylvan Senior Center, some to Lincoln Senior Center. It isn't half to all go, here's all Lincoln Council on Aging.
No, you could go.
No, I'm gonna.
Right, that's, that's the deal we're talking about here, I, I want to, about what budget we got here, what we're gonna do.
Want to place it on the agenda to talk next week and I'll find this budget to scan and email home to you?
Yeah, I'm still looking. I thought I had.
What's that?
All the budgets, but I don't know if I, I have to have them.
Schedule this on the agenda next week to talk, and I'll, in, in, this week I'll scan and email you each of their budgets, but I have upstairs.
Can, can, you can maybe get Becky Rathbun to come visit us?
Yeah.
Well, I would like to have to do that, if you can.
Do you want, shall we go out two weeks then?
Yeah, we don't have to do it immediately.
I think we should also notify the senior centers. I mean, they should have some representation here too.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, senior center, Lincoln Council on Aging, all of them could come here. We could have all this.
Two weeks gonna be all.
We got all this confusing discussion, I could really.
We had two senior.
Well, I never understand what the hell is going on.
Or you wanna go.
But Randy, you have to accept the fact that the meals program has nothing to do with.
I know, I know that, Alexis.
But I explained it to you last year, and we're.
I know that, I know that. But the, the council on aging works with the senior center. They all work together. I, I'm telling you how it operates. I know what you're talking officially boundaries here. I realize that, you're right. I'm not arguing.
That's how I wish it would operate.
Okay.
It's not necessarily.
Well, we got old people and they don't, they're innocent and interested in this stuff, and you.
Talk to Michael, he wants to.
I just have a comment, uh, when I was on LCC, I did bring up the subject that not senior centers alone, but like the city of Delphus, if they would have an activity for seniors that night, they could be request funds, uh, Westfall, et cetera.
Well, I'm not a gift.
That got shot down.
So, how long should I set aside time for?
An hour.
Yeah, an hour.
Okay, so on the February eighteenth, we've already got the evaluation process, so, um, I had that you guys were doing lunch from twelve to one, so I don't have anywhere that has an hour. Do you wanna go to next week and then do it in the afternoon?
Which week, which date would that be?
Twenty-four.
It'd be February twenty-fourth.
What, what, do we have a deadline? We have to split this money?
It, no, we, we are not obligated.
I just do the sixty percent and it was in my spreadsheet, and they even asked me about it and I.
Well, I kinda looked at that and I'm going, I didn't know, I knew we did fifty thousand budget, but I thought maybe we just set that for.
Did you get an annual report from Lincoln Senior Center or LCCA for two thousand nineteen?
I have sent it to them. I don't know if it's been returned, because I think the council does there.
Yeah, that, I think twenty-four is fine.
Okay, so how about, how about I plan in the afternoon?
Twenty-four.
Senior center people?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the email from the senior center.
Okay, I can do that.
And if you get Lincoln Senior Center officials and House, Council on Aging, whoever wants to come, obviously Becky, she's involved with both. But if other officers wanna come, that'd be great, okay, then we can discuss where we're at.
That's the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
All right, Sean, hey.
Please come.
Were you stopping at a diner before you got here?
No, no, I've been kinda running around like.
I know. Is that yours?
Yes.
Have to apologize when I was doing this.
It's okay, we were discussing other issues anyway, it's okay.
Oh, yeah.
How you doing?
Indirectly forgot to take off. I'm doing well.
Roses, right up low out there, by your, by your way?
Much improved.
That's three hundredth road there where I should deliver your mail, I'll let down the bathroom.
Uh, yeah, that one I don't think they've created yet, um, the green.
Here, I'll just pass.
One of these was short.
What's Joe Funk doing these days?
Julie passed.
Did she really?
She did.
I missed that.
See when they hired me, anybody else wanna copy this? Shortly after she retired, she got sick. And, uh, bought it pretty valiantly for a year or so, and then, uh, passed.
Sure, I missed that.
Yeah.
She came out years ago at that other farm, I think that was, remember we put in ladder.
Can I hand these to you guys? There's just two, I don't know how you, I brought you, you should pop, and then, because we did quite a bit of work up at the lake, we did a eight by eleven.
Maybe easier to share.
Yeah, I'll just roll, I'll roll mine out. We're getting all kinds of presents today, maps and stuff.
This is, um, in an effort to try to show you county coverage, and just, uh, sometimes so much of what we base it on is, um, permits. And the, the permits will always tell the story of how busy we are or. But it did one up. Something that we've been working with our GIS, we all also are.
Do you have some due?
No, we're gonna look at yours.
You can center that.
Oh, okay. You did a lot of, all those people in the white are where you worked this year, huh?
Yes, and then, uh, down in the ledger, we'll say the activities. Kinda shows you the coverage that we do across the county, and then, like I said, over it, near Wilson Lake was kinda cluttered, so we did a separate map showing, uh, some of those homes. Let's, let's go to the third quarter and then we'll go to, uh.
Talking numbers here now, okay.
Yeah, actually, the little handout I gave you.
What, where are you?
Third quarter.
Oh, environmental house, third quarter, okay.
So we ended up with, uh, thirty-three hours on septicage, uh, twenty-one hours in water inspections, uh, and then, uh, four and a half hours of lab time. Then we had, uh, some meetings, which would be, uh, LEPC meetings, or commissioner meetings. Didn't really, I just kinda clumped them all together, run out, so for the third quarter, we ended up with seventy hours. Four real estate transactions.
Oh, okay.
Dawn, is this just a separate line item in our general fund?
Yes. Yeah, we paid them a loan song.
We paid them, uh, Friday.
In January.
It's paid upfront. Yes, yeah.
What'd you do?
She fell for one.
At least we.
Order in a court, order in a court.
Who's in charge here anyway?
Well, I'm trying to be, but I'm way too good out of control, I go.
Our, uh, fourth quarter, uh, was a little more busier, we did, uh, eight inspections, four consults, most of those consults were, um, working with people on real estate transactions, and then what they need to do with receptive system to real estate transactions. Ended up with forty-two hours, twenty-one hours doing, uh, well. Most of those were, uh, starts of well permits, so we ended up with twenty-one hours, and then six hours of lab time and doing the water testing that we did. And, uh, so we ended up in the fourth quarter, but we did do an education for community, which is the fourth grade. Um, over in Sylvan, they have a ag field day, and on our part, we talk about edible aquifer. We create an edible aquifer in the kids, they talk to them about the water cycle, and then, uh, their aquifer and the importance of protecting it, you know, we have a little, uh, demonstration where you, uh, use chocolate chips and soda, then we use ice cream as soil, and we'll have them drill a well and pull out a vacuum, so they realize how a well works, and then we come around with some red soda, pour in there, and we show them how easy it is to contaminate their soil. So many kids are, even though they live on the farm, they're not associated with the farm, so sometimes just the education of teaching them.
Was that high school, or grade school?
These are fourth graders.
Oh, fourth grade, at Lucas?
Um, this was at Sylvan, but yes, Lucas, uh, Sylvan and the Lincoln kids. And then, um, had some meetings, I'm sure there's, uh, commissioner meeting and LEPCs, we ended up with eighty-two hours. So.
You do billable hours to the county for LEPC meetings?
Yes.
Are, are you our appointed county representative for our board?
Yes.
Okay, plus we have to have.
Your chair.
I know you are now, why do they do the meetings, why, are you gonna change that, so we don't do them on Mondays?
We did talk about that, uh, I think we have enough scheduled meeting, I think we went to a Thursday.
Yeah, let me know please, I'll write it down.
Yeah, let me, bear with me as I look that up in a moment. Okay, it is gonna be April second, Thursday, at noon to one, and.
At the hospital?
No, we're gonna try to do it at, uh, emergency, or the. That was the last I know, and, uh.
And so, then I'm, I was on it, I mean, I'm still on it, that's fine, but, and then we had, we just, we approved, uh, Fred and McKay.
Yes. I think.
And LeDon is on it.
I'm not on it.
You're not on it.
Well, Alexis, you were right.
Well, was I that because I was the chair, or was I just assigned to that board, I don't remember.
Yeah, I think you were just a representative.
That's fine, I'll stay on it, I.
Yeah, so that'll be April second, will be the next meeting, so yes, we're gonna try to find a day to come.
Thank you.
Everybody. You guys, I've been on that board for a long time, we used to have those meetings at nights, and we get way more attendance in the daytime than we did at nights. And, uh, nights were difficult, especially for me, I had small children, so I'd have to find somebody to watch the kids or I'd bring them to the meeting, um, sometimes I don't know which one was more distracting, but. We, we worked, we worked our way through it, um, the last page of this before I go into.
Seems to be a, quite a rise in the last three years on contamination.
On, uh, sampling?
Yeah.
Well, um.
What line item are you looking at?
He just, I was just looking at the number of samples he's done in nineteen as opposed to seventeen-eight, I suppose that's a matter of time.
Um, that's just, these are just the amount of tests that we did, so these are requested services. So, um, this is kinda showing me we're getting back into, um, if you, you guys were, not everybody was here when we, we used to be joint funded, and that funding, um, well, that just dissolved in the county, it assumed us, and, and so we raised some of our rates and some of that, we kinda priced ourselves out of the market, um, so that hurt our request for water service, um, cause there is people that will do it, so, um, we're doing a little better job of getting that market back. And the reason we wanna do a good job of that is, when we go out and collect the water, of course, we in-house our lab stuff, but we also get a, a chance to inspect the wellhead itself, and most of the issues that we find with the wellhead in general, are conditions from either crack casing, or, um, the electrical's not run properly, or the gasket and the sanitary seal is cracked, there's issues that we can find that are out there that helps diagnose what's going on with the well.
That's for drinking water, not necessarily.
Right, drinking water and livestock.
Like a wet, wet flooded year, is that worse, like, cause you gotta, more, so much more water's moving above ground, underground too, that, that could contaminate wells?
Yeah, uh, the water level comes into the well higher, and so when the pump kicks on, it has a tendency to just draw in water where it's easiest. And so you can draw in more surface water.
Right, surface water, yeah.
Bring in, um, and we've seen some of that, uh, last year. At the top is the host, historical for the number of permits that we did, so, and, uh, just to kinda give you a historical of where we've been with the county and, and hopefully where we're going, but, so we ended up doing nine septic systems, and we have done two this month that was in hopes that we would have got that done in nineteen, but we didn't, and then there's one more that's pending, um, as soon as the weather cures up, we'll get it done also, so, and, uh, one well permit. And I've actually done another one of those that will get issued out in two thousand and twenty, um, it's a, the wells are a little bit different, you know, you have the process of getting the permit, getting the well actually drilled, and then getting a pump in it and then getting us back out to get tested.
You gotta get a permit now before you drill one, right?
Yes.
Is that for not, for cattle too, or just for human?
For livestock, we like to do the permits, there is no charge in Lincoln County for the livestock wells. We do like to permit them, because then we have record of it, plus we also, um, get a copy of the WWC five, which is the drilling log.
Okay.
Um, so that helps us if somebody would wanna drill in that general area of how, you know, how, how deep was that well?
Yeah.
Any water quality issues, um, so we.
In the city, you involved in that permitting process, just the city?
No, we're in unincorporated areas of the county only, unless it's an unincorporated city.
Like Westfall or something.
Yes.
We're probably gonna drill a well in the community garden in the city of Lincoln.
Yeah, you, you won't need a permit from us and, and.
You gotta go through city council on that though?
Does the state still keep up with all the wells, don't you have the state permission before you can drill, or at least report it?
Yeah, you, you, the well driller will be required to submit what's called a WWC five drilling log, and then he will try to meet all the separation disciplines that are set forth by the city or the county. Uh, when you're in the city jurisdiction, the jurisdiction falls on the city to say, how far away from out there, I'll leave some sewer and, and water. So we just strictly do unincorporated areas of county. Um, we also did thirteen, uh, um, water tests, mainly for what we call our basic, which is coliform bacteria, E. coli bacteria, and chloride nitrate. And, um, that kinda leads us back to the front page here, um, where we were talking about urine analysis, so. Of the thirteen requests, we did a total of sixty-five separate tests, those are all, uh, done in-house in our lab in Solana. And, um, seven of them were positive for bacteria, um, zero for E. coli, which is a good thing. Coliform bacteria is naturally occurring, and, um, if a well is open, uh, where oxygen can get into it or stagnant, um, that helps feed that bacteria account, you'll kinda see a spike on it. Um, when I have those thirteen requests, uh, three were for fluoride, one for iron, two for lead, one for manganese, and the thirteen of for, for nitrates, so, because our costs had got a little excessive, we kind of just do our basic and then we'll ask questions, kind of a Q and A of what else we wanna test for. So the fluorides would have been for, uh, younger families that had children. It's important that during their teeth development, they have a good amount of fluoride, and most of our water doesn't have enough in it, and it's something to know, so you can add, uh, some droplets, um, to their drinks, to get that level up, depending on how you feel about fluoride or not.
Israel just banned it, so, that's what I'm gonna say about it.
But it's, it's a highly, highly, uh, talked about subject, so.
I thought you were gonna say highly, highly toxic.
No.
So, when you say there were thirteen requests, when you say different, thirteen total, but on, they just chose what they wanted tested, so all of them wanted tested for nitrates, all of them wanted tested for chloride, but only one wanted iron testing, or, okay, so they checked off, okay.
Yes, so, uh, really we did one full sample, almost full, and then, uh, three would have been children, and then two of them were concerned about lead, and so, of course, we tested for that, anything that they have concerns on, otherwise we tailor it to the needs of the customer, so if you have red staining, it's a sign of iron. Black stain, staining is, uh, manganese, white is sulfate, so if you have deposits on your, your drinks, um, those are things that you can test, but each one of them, you, you can limit the amount of it by an in-house filter or reverse osmosis or a water softener, there's different methods, but you need to know what your basic water test is, so you can size that equipment or size that filtering mechanism for it.
I've had it do mine several times, haven't I, cause I got hard water and well water.
And then.
Higher, sulfates.
So fifty per, uh, four percent of them were positive for coliform bacteria, and, um, as you were saying, you know, a lot of flooding going on this year, I'm sure.
Changes the, yeah.
The complexity of what's going on. Right, and, uh, so we'll follow that stat this year and see if that's something that'll change. And we did have one above, um, the lead level of five, uh, milligrams per liter, and so, um, that's, that fifty percent sounds high, but there was only two of them, so, uh, one of them kinda skews that just a little bit. Uh, twenty-three percent exceeded, uh, nitrate level of ten milligrams per liter, um, and those are all things, like I said, you can do reverse osmosis, you just need to know at what level you're at, and then at what percentage you need to remove to get into a safe drinking level. And then, uh, one hundred percent of them were all below the one milligram per liter, which is the secondary drinking standard. And this just talks about what we do, the visual inspection of each well, and we talked to the homeowner at the time that we're there, and anything that's pointed out, we write on our note card, also explain to the homeowner, and then we have, um, case state engineering extension documents that we submit with our report, uh, talking to them, you know, how to fix that or how to, um, and then we also, you know, can refer them back to a licensed, uh, water well installer or, uh, contractor that can fix that for them. So eight percent of the wells, uh, were not constructed to current standards, it's kind of a low number, um, I'm surprised it wasn't a little more, um, but I think the people that are aware enough to call us typically have newer wells, it's just kind of a, you know, it's time to have my water tested and, uh, come on out. Uh, fifty-three percent of them were not sealed correctly, and, uh, most of that has to do with, uh, wiring going into the sanitary seal, they bumped that with their mower, and, uh, usually it's rigid PVC and it'll break. So over the last six or seven years, we've been using more of a flex conduit, so people bumped it, it has some give to it, so it'll flex away and yet they can, you know, without breaking it, and so we've had a better job with that. And then just making people aware of in that sanitary seal, there's a no ring, and, you know, they just weather and crack and, and so when they're opening that up to check it and, and look it over. Uh, location, fifteen percent of the wells, most of that has to do at the proximity of the wells to the home, or wells to, um, the right-of-way, um, you know, in the, the old style homes, the well was drilled and then the house was built around the well, and so a lot of them, And so a lot of them, you know, in the old days, you could be twenty-five feet from a well. Well now they moved that farther out to fifty, um, because they realized twenty-five feet, you can get, uh, that well impacted by things going on in that environment, so.
The runoff from your roof or something, or what would?
Well, uh, your sewer lines, in the old days, they were clay tile and they were like in two foot sections. And the way they were designed was to allow seepage as they go out.
Oh, I see.
So, uh.
It has nothing to do with modern day plumbing, it's just something they changed out of what they saw, what they.
Right.
Realized.
You know, you and I have talked about updating our code, just the standards, uh, from year to year change. And so those are things that, you know, that twenty-five feet, twenty, thirty years ago was sufficient. Well now it's up to fifty feet. So those are things that we, we wanna update. And so as we do our work, we make sure that any well is gonna be fifty feet away from a septic or lateral. And vice versa, if, if, uh, if we're doing a, a well, we also need to be fifty feet away from fuel barrels, um, liquid fertilizers or storage, anything that is harmful, cause that fifty foot is what they call a radius of influence. So when that pump's running on a full, anything within fifty feet has the potential to end up in that groundwater, so.
It actually seems like it should be more.
Well, it could be if you're using a large, you know, the.
If you spilled a large quantity at once.
Right.
And it saturated the.
If you were using irrigation oil, you'd be pulling within a quarter mile or a minute.
High capacity and.
Right, higher volume, more usage.
Yeah.
So you're drawing in, uh, more water, so. Uh, two thousand, let's see, type of, two thousand and nineteen, I apologize. Uh, one well was completed in the process, four new wells have been started. And, uh, like I said, I know I've done one and I'll have to get around to check on the others. The one good thing about doing is your year end report is you find things that.
Go back and fix it.
Right, right. Okay, so the next page and the last one that we'll hash over is the stats, uh, for the wastewater. So you had, um, nine septic systems. They were all replacement. And, um, of the nine, nine of them are rocket pipe. Like, yeah, these ones, we had some septic tanks, lovely. So, um, when I come to work in two thousand and eight, it was, uh, kinda flipped off. We did mostly chambered systems and, uh, my career, probably. Over my career, um, we're starting to see that go back to the rocket pipe, so the issues with the chamber system or the soils that we have in our county is just not being suited for that property. So, so little details about, any questions or concerns?
You were up, like, recently, they were doing several, we had a concern with some of the.
Yeah.
You know about that, and about, there was a concern with the, with the, uh.
Water line?
We had a water line, but how close it would be to a septic.
Yeah, yeah.
Drain or system.
Remember, we talked to him on the phone, he said they were gonna double encase it or something.
Right, is that what they wound up doing?
That, we haven't done it yet, but that's, that's the plan of doing it. So we'll, we'll run a six inch line and then run the four inch inside of it.
Okay.
But we should be well beneath the, the line. Now that's something I kinda dropped the ball on there. I meant to mention that when I was up here at the last quarter and I forgot about it. Because I had, um, met with the contractor out there early on, I've actually met with him two or three times on that property. Because the, the highest point of that property and the most ideal for building it is just a little small corner there. And they can get the house there, but they cannot get the septic system to meet separation distances from the home.
Yeah, we saw it.
We kinda hoped you could do the whole till top up there.
Oh, I can't do that. Can't do that. And, uh, yeah, we have done some business up there, those, some of those properties have sold. And, um, they've done, uh, real estate transactions and we've done some updating up there.
From the Lincoln side, on the Lincoln County side?
Yes, yep.
Oh.
And that's in the eight by ten, you'll get a picture of some of that.
On the, it, now would this be?
This is on Ridge Road and then also.
Okay, so further south on Ridge Road than, than where that new one's going in?
North, I think.
And it'd just be north of there, we did two of them.
You know, when you curve around, if you kept going north, instead of the top of that hill, just keep going, yeah.
Okay.
If you pull that eight by ten out.
Yeah, we have to.
You have some continuing minor concern of that whole thing, don't you, because of the way your water pipe.
See, there's that hill, there's a hill.
Well, they're real, real small lots.
This one over here.
Development is probably.
This is down here where we had the landslide, right?
Yeah, they're small acreages.
Oh, I was thinking on this is Ridge Road, this is Ridge Road.
Yeah, yeah.
They have the three acre minimums.
I was thinking.
Well, they once called it Ridge Trail.
That's right, that's right.
Here's Ridge Circle.
It's still great, yeah.
System is very small.
Yeah, but there's one over here, that's new too.
So we try and talk to, to people about, hey, you know, this really needs to be a priority, you know, like.
What, what is that?
Uh, we set the tank because we can meet the separation distances by the house, but the laterals have to be on that other property. So we just cannot meet that, yes.
What's the purple dot?
Um, real estate transactions.
Oh, is that?
So when, when they sell a property.
Isn't that where, uh?
Yeah, that's, that's the guy who came in, who lives at the end of the.
What's his name, Enfield, Larry Enfield, did he sell his place then?
Yeah, what, I don't, I don't recognize that name.
He's the county commissioner.
Michael Morrison, yeah, but they have on there now.
Michael Morrison.
Is that?
That is Larry Enfield's house.
No, that would have been the seller of the.
Oh, okay, so that was the seller.
Oh, because that Enfield was back there and he was the one what's got us.
That was the prior owner.
Oh, prior owner, yeah, okay, okay. Cause it's Mr. Enfield just moving in, I guess, okay.
Yeah, that, the tank and then the lateral field's down in the trees and then, um, there's an old driveway that's used to hook around and come down here. So the laterals are down there.
There's this house on the hill right here.
What do you call that line item for this budget?
That's a nice county line, I'd like to know where that runs.
Yeah, that picture's good.
Well, if you take this.
That's probably a hassle with all that hills and.
L E P program?
L E.
Valleys and hills and all that and rocks and all that's a nightmare for utilities and stuff, huh?
Yeah, um, and, yeah, some of them coming in at different angles, so, um.
Well, the lots, the lots are different. And way back when before you and all of us, they just kinda just put those utilities in any way they kinda wanted to, didn't they?
Right, as they were kinda developed.
That's why we got an issue up there now, kinda, hopefully we'll.
But, um, if, if we cross that water line, we'll, we'll make sure to do it.
Yeah, we know.
Don't worry about that.
And now that there's more tension about all this, we're trying to work with Russell County to make sure everything gets more organized up there.
Usually have a really good working relationship with Post Rock and, and, um, most of our contractors, um, do work for Post Rock. And so we're well versed in what their, their requirements or requests are and.
Yeah, Kenny Kruger is well into what's going on up there.
Yeah, and he, he most likely will be the one doing it.
He said he was, he's the one that brought it up to start with.
Okay.
And he just wanted to make sure that we knew what was going on.
Yeah, and so, all right, any other concerns, Dawn?
No, I, do you guys, or I just, Jim, you ain't know?
Sometimes you need to come out to my place.
Okay.
I gotta well look at, you need to make sure my lagoon's still all right, things like that.
Yeah.
No personal business.
We did a lagoon on a three year cycle. You have been out there a long time.
I'll have to see.
Yeah, I got.
Business, right? But, um.
Yeah, you do.
My place is.
Yes.
Make it official.
North of Lincoln.
Pound a little bit, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, you always give a very thorough report and I do appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks, Sean.
It's more detailed than some of the ones that should probably go on for days.
Well, you pay us good money and we like to provide a good service, so, thank you for doing it.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, like you.
I'm sensing the criticism too, I want you to know that upfront. But don't come out here hauling names.
Okay, so I wanted to go back and touch on something that we had a question, what did it cost for DeLisa's or what is it costing? Now, I don't know, Dawn, are you able to pull up what the collections were for, uh, this, uh, one, one to one thirty-one?
Yes.
If you would do that, please.
That was that hundred and fifty thousand dollar, but I'll tell you exactly here in a minute. And then I can also.
No, no, not for the year, just the month of, I'm just doing the month payout, like the month.
Oh.
I just wanna know what DeLisa's collected for us in January.
So far in January.
Or are we paying them January as of what they collected in December?
Their bill comes out of the first of the month, so what we paid them.
Okay, so please look up December, yeah, so please look up December, I just wanna give them, they had asked what it's costing.
It's seven percent and seventy dollar base, but let's put real numbers to.
Yeah, yeah, you can do the math, but we had already looked at this when we decided to contract this out. I mean, it was definitely gonna be cheaper than having an employee do it as far as, I guess it's debatable. Because if they're covering a twenty-four hour shift and doing it, it's debatable. But the expertise that we wanted to get us back on track after having some billing issues, I do think we're gaining ground. I mean, obviously we have some issues, but not nearly what we were gonna have if we just let it go and didn't actually get a third party person in here to start coding and doing all of that.
Okay, so in the month of December, it was eleven thousand, four ninety-one, seventy-four.
Okay, so that's how much we build out for ambulance service and out of that, we paid DeLisa's six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Okay, yeah, so exactly.
Exactly, I mean.
Well, and I'm telling you, if you write this number down.
Whatever the seven percent is of what we will.
We collected a hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Say that again.
A hundred and fifty-one, four ninety-seven, ninety-seven last year.
Okay.
And then I can go look up and see what we paid DeLisa here today.
Uh-huh.
So you can kinda see.
And we paid them beside seven percent too.
We pay them seventy dollars a month.
Oh, seventy a month.
Seventy a month and seven percent of whatever we collect.
So seventy a month is, uh, what, eight hundred?
Piece for the postage.
Eight twenty, uh, eight forty a year.
So that's still cheaper than having some money on our payroll this year.
Well, if we.
However, last year we paid eleven thousand, seven forty-one, ninety-four.
However, if someone in the health department was capable of coding, we're already paying them, we're already paying their, um, and if they actually have the time, we could give them a pay raise and maybe save money, um.
Yeah, for a thousand dollars a month, if we did another hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of business.
Right.
For, which that, but some of that's back billed, so let's just take that down to a hundred thousand dollars worth of business and the seventy, or seven thousand dollars then of seven percent of that. So for seven thousand dollars, the health department could essentially, you're saying, absorb that seven thousand dollars to do it all in-house. But one of them would have to be willing to get a little more credentialed, I think, because what they're used to doing.
But make that offer and see if they could come.
Well, that leads me into my next.
They don't have any part-time help in the health department, do they?
Um, they have four people.
Lisa White would be part-time, wouldn't she, part of the time, was there Lisa White?
Yeah, she was.
She's only Fridays.
One day a week.
Uh, yeah. Um, but that all leads me into my next point of discussion, which I, I, we don't need to stay here till four again, but.
No, whatever, if we got the business, we'll do what we got.
So, um, we had talked about emergency management and we set a salary line item of seventeen thousand. The commodities at seven thousand, six hundred and the contractual at ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five. And I think what, what's been happening is Ladonna's been performing the paperwork function to just keep everything up to snuff. And she's been billing her hours to the EMS department to do that, okay? She indicated to me before that she does not wish to continue that. I don't know where she stands right now, that was maybe two months ago. My suggestion is, um, you know, for seventeen thousand, so let's just make it easy and say, well, that's like fourteen hundred a month, right? So, for a little over a thousand dollars a month.
Sorry, that's my brother.
I apologize.
That's his laugh, that's his laugh. He has a wheezy, wheezy laugh.
I call it the laughing hyena. Sounds like, but.
He's a character.
Sorry.
Uh, he had me snorting, so I, and whatever.
That's okay, carry on, uh.
Um, what I'm getting at is, we basically have a thousand to fourteen hundred dollars a month, okay? So instead of employing someone completely separate, I know we had advertised for the E M T position, but we essentially could pay any one of our employees up to however many who we wanted to get credentialed. We have the salary to pay for their education, they have two years to get it once they're assigned. And, you know, I personally have a little bit of a problem with the state setup, that they have seven designated positions that are regional to oversee one person in every county that holds that authority. I mean, what's wrong with paying, you know, we could offer a two hundred dollar a month salary increase, bump, whatever that is, to perform the functions of getting credentialed and being available. Now, that's not the paperwork end of it, that's just to be credentialed. So essentially, we could enhance any one of our employees, if, say we opened five positions for this. Any one of them at, could make two hundred and fifty dollars a month just to maintain their credentials so that they are available to us for this position. And we're covered, if one of them leaves, we have four more, if three of them leave, we have two more. I mean, I always wondered why we were paying for all this education for one person to go to Texas and Arizona and everywhere else. And when they're gone, they're gone. And then we had people crying, well, no, we don't have one. So maybe we need to solve that problem and have multiples, because the paperwork is one thing, but just being credentialed, I mean.
Don't you need to have a personnel, actual onsite to respond to?
That's what I've asked a million times, they don't do anything onsite. They are a liaison for.
So like David, then David was here with his truck, he would, if there was a hurricane or a hurricane or a tornado, he, he's not responsible to been there, nobody was.
He was doing that out of personal interest, it wasn't actually a function of his job.
You have to have an emergency manager, like, kinda like sheriffs and EMS, be onsite to deal with stuff.
How would you like to be the guy to tell Sheriff Mike Weigle what to do out on the scene?
Why?
Exactly.
Or the fire.
No, I'm not.
And that's where I, no, I struggled to understand the position for a long time.
His whole job is to prepare a plan to coordinate with all of the outside, ex, extra county employees. So if something happens, you pull that plan out, it's gotta be kept current. You know who to call, what to call, what facilities and, and the equipment and stuff they have and what they can bring to you.
You have state contacts and you have.
Well, I heard like when was up at the, those fires at the lake, we had big, big fires, remember all that?
Yes.
Multiple counties. Then they'd say you may need an emergency manager to be a point of contact for, say, three counties and three sheriffs. That's where, when they went, would that person need to be onsite? Uh, you're saying we just need somebody to credential, but doesn't have to really do anything ever out, out in the field. Well, then if you do go out and have a, like, or a hurricane, or a hurricane, tornado, who is the Lincoln appointed, who's in charge?
You won't, he won't be in charge, you'll have the sheriff.
But who is it? Okay, well then, okay, you might be arguing, I'm not arguing, I'm just asking now, if there is, but, heaven forbid, a bad tornado, whatever, comes down, makes you. Who's the person Lincoln's in charge of and taking charge of what to do?
Okay, as I, as I qualified, the paperwork is an, is an entity of its, is a monster of itself, which Ladonna is currently doing and billing out of the, out of the contractual line item. That's complete, the paperwork is always gonna be there, whether it's happening during or after or whatever.
And I agree with that a lot.
So, to be credentialed though, we can incentivize people that are already county employees to make more money just to be credentialed and get involved. They can be part of the L A P C board or they, you know, they can be involved in that process.
Or coordinate with EMS or in the sheriff's department.
Right. Now, the paperwork end of it, we have to have that conversation with Ladonna, but again, anyone in the county within a department that feels that they can take that on, just like Ladonna has done, could get paid to do that. In fact, I think Ladonna's just billing hour for hour, she could actually be taking on that responsibility herself and get a pay raise. Do you see what I'm saying? I, there are ways that we can incorporate it, I guess, you know, I sat in the last L A P C meeting that I could make, you know, the other one, the last one, we had a commission meeting during, but I asked specifically, like you were saying, what do you do on the scene?
Yeah.
Well, someone calls and says, I don't, you know, I think we're gonna need another, uh, fire truck at this visit. So, yeah, you can make that phone call.
It's situation dependent, if you have a fire out there, and it's in Lincoln County, the Lincoln County Fire Department is in charge, if they need help, they call Ellsworth. He's the man that's gonna coordinate all of the fire, cause he's the person that can. If you have a long portion of it, see you got, uh, chase going across hill and valley, it's Weigle's gonna do it. And what we really need to do is grab that plan that they've got in the next door and let's take a look and see what it says. And then we'll be a whole lot smarter on who can do it and who can't do it. But he's not gonna be an on-scene commander after our ground.
Yeah, you've educated me on that, now, thank you.
But that part is confusing, because all the terminology that they use.
Emergency manager.
Make you seem as if the position is a coordinator onsite.
Right.
They don't administer. They don't administer sa- life-saving CPR. They don't tell the sheriff whether he can or cannot.
Let's grab the plan and see what it says. That's what we need to do. Not today, though.
Well, I need to get it, though.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, but let's not do it today. You know, you got a good point, Lex, I just, I just don't want.
I'm thinking, I'm trying to think of ways that we can best utilize our money to feed the people that we already have.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know, do we really need to add more people to our.
But like now, but like now, currently, we don't have.
Table, or do we feed the ones that are there?
We currently don't have an emergency manager now in Lincoln County, and if we had some accident or catastrophe, are we in a position where we could be liable one way or another for?
We just gotta see what the plan says, 'cause it, what the plan says is the.
That's all I care about.
External people come in and measure our performance against that plan.
I don't want to sue for a million bucks, 'cause we didn't have emergency managers, and I'm not saying we are. I, I agree with you, I would say mine too.
I wanna remind everyone that once upon a time, this position did not exist, and once upon a time, the state mandated that every county must fund their own. So it doesn't say how you have to fund it, but to have someone credentialed, wouldn't it be better to have more than one person credentialed? I mean, I'm not the one that's gonna show up when a tornado happens.
Right.
You know, if, if there's emergency funding or something that needs to happen, maybe then the commission gets involved. But to my understanding, we already have multiple people in the highway department that have certain basic credentials, you know? Are we going to reward the people that do it and have it be part of the cross-training effort that we're?
A lot of them are already on the fire department, yeah.
But you, you gotta have a person, uh, some, a lot of kind of education, 'cause you're gonna have to read and write, and you got to write.
Someone has to do the paperwork.
Well, and somebody has to coordinate, though, too, coordinate with people. You're saying they don't have to be, they're not the point of contact, but they have to coordinate maybe with sheriff and EMS and fire. Saying, what's going on, what are we doing, you know?
It's, the way I understand it is, is once your intern- internal resources are exhausted, then you follow the plan.
That's right.
And, right, but the person doing the paperwork can potentially serve as that person. That, I think, has yet to be determined whether or not Ladonna wants to continue to do that.
We need to look at the plan, 'cause we're making assumptions in the dark here, from what we think, and this and that, and let's, let's look at the plan and see what it really says. The plan has been approved at the di- district and probably the state level.
Yes.
So we just need to.
Well, that's part of the requirements of being the emergency manager, is that you keep that updated, like you said, and then turn it in and submit it, so.
Yeah, if somebody can read and write.
Wow.
Well, hopefully, we get, yeah, you need to get somebody, talk about everybody, not everybody can.
Some counties outsource that plan writing to.
Yeah, to one of the paid positions at the state that deem themselves lobbyists.
We've been unsuccessful in surrounding counties that wanna take any part of our emergency management.
Well, here, I'll tell you exactly why, because it jeopardizes the legitimacy of the position. When you commit to sharing responsibilities, you're admitting that you don't have enough for your forty-hour week. And so other counties that are smaller out on the west end of the state, they've done this because they realize that they have limited resources. We are surrounded by counties who want to legitimize that full-time position for their own staff. They do. That's the amazing part. They share that position.
And they're both bigger counties than us, by population and money line.
In other counties, those positions hold additional responsibilities, which is what we tried to do with ours, but that didn't work, so. I, I think we can revisit that, looking at the plan, and then you talked, you'd asked about the, um, the council on aging, and I just wanted to give you the last paperwork that I have from them. Uh, this was their advertisement, fifteen to thir- up, fifteen up to thirty hours per week. Benefits include three and a half hours of paid time off accrued every month, holiday pay, um, mileage reimbursement, and enrollment fees for continuing education at twelve fifty an hour. Experience one to three years of similar experience, employees expected to have acquired the necessary information to perform the job within six months. A high school diploma or GED, uh, education, college education, work experience in social work, elder services, or community volunteer organizations is preferred. This employee should have knowledge of senior services and experience working with grants. Have the ability to perform basic computer functions, accurately have attention to detail, ability to work with senior citizens, understand their needs, have the ability to match their needs with available programs. Be able to cooperate, to, excuse me, be able to operate standard office machinery and have computer knowledge, possess excellent organizational, public relations, oral and written communication skills. Problem solving. Um, problems this employee may include are dealing with the senior citizen customer and identifying their specific needs. Decision-making. Decisions this employee may handle determine the appropriate services for the needs of senior citizens. Um, the position acts under supervision of the council on aging, and this employee works with volunteers to provide appropriate services to the elder. Council on Aging is funded by tax dollars of up to two mils, state and federal grants. The coordinator is not responsible for working with the board to prepare the budget, and, um, the budget committee will prepare the budget. The employee has daily contact with seniors, service providers, and frequent contact with organizational body is expected. Example, attending Lincoln County Health Department provider meetings. Physical requirements, yadda, yadda, attendance, regular. Okay, so then the Lincoln County Council on Aging wrote this, as you were asking about what is their function. The mission of the Lincoln County Council on Aging is to enhance the quality of life by promoting independence, self-fulfillment, and health for older adults in Lincoln County through advocacy, education, and promoting appropriate community-based services. We are currently working on implementing a senior companion program to help battle senior isolation in Lincoln County. The senior citizens who are currently attending the Lincoln Senior Center or Sylvan Senior Center are not our target audience. We have also done some research on a day trip for seniors idea suggested to us, taking short trips around the county to allow for fellowship and friendship. Um, and then it says, services that have been implemented in two thousand nineteen from the LCCA. A Tai Chi class at the Lincoln Senior Center, Medicare open enrollment, which would be schick. Uh, expanding the meals program.
The Tai Chi class came from.
The Tai Chi class is all through, yeah, that's not them, but, yeah, but.
Just saying, that's who pays.
Making it known that it's available. Yeah, okay, you're right, though, they're not doing the program. Um, working on expanding meals program by offering compensation for delivery drivers. Assisting with services to keep seniors in their homes, referring them to area agency on aging from Flint Hills, can care assistance, Medicare paperwork assistance, which would be kind of schick related, well, schick, I guess, if it's. And prescription assistance, but you'd have to be schick certified to do that, so they don't do that either.
And home step tax, which they may or may not have listed on there.
I don't see it listed. And then promoting live healthy, stay healthy exercise class through K-State. Organizing programs through Patterson Pharmacy for Lincoln Senior Center and Sylvan Senior Center on prescription management. Bringing Medicare basics workshops to county senior citizens, the senior centers, excuse me. And then they assisted the Vesper Club with a grant for thirty-five hundred dollars to replace the doors.
And the pharmacies came to the council on aging and said they could provide this service, which is the same thing.
So I guess, I mean, to clarify what we were talking about earlier, the function of the board is to promote things that already exist. They're not necessarily performing a physical activity, other than paying for the phone being answered during certain hours of the day, that the Lincoln Senior Center isn't necessarily having their activities. 'Cause the Lincoln's activity, the senior center's activities end after lunch, pretty much. I mean, I think they get people to participate before lunch in a card game or something like that, and then they have lunch, and then they basically shut down for the day. So those afternoon hours.
So seniors can go home and take their naps, regardless of that. It is, that's why they quit.
Well, good, they need it. I need one. But the, the hours that are getting paid for, for a, for a desk to be manned and the phone to be answered, that's what the LCCA's been paying for. But it's all happening within the building of the senior center, and has been. I mean, they briefly moved over there and spent a lot of money to have an external.
Remember, we got a letter from the council on aging advising the commissioners about that position. And it was brought to you commissioners from Karen.
Oh, I know, well. And I had asked her many times in prior years about that, and she would never specify what the function was, and or, or even detailed to me the difference between Lincoln County, which is always the anomaly, compared to how the other organizations were doing it. And then all of a sudden, when we lost the full-time employee, she was ready to speak up. That I found interesting. But.
Well, we'll discuss it then. Twenty-fourth.
But wouldn't say that before. We, she had attended meetings that I'd been at, that she would never sign anything.
I gotta go, I gotta take him off to the hospital.
Okay, uh, one more thing, Jim, I was just gonna update, Jim was thinking, was, has been working Lexus on the handbook, and he discovered that K-Camp's already been doing a lot of stuff.
So you're gonna ditch all the edits we made to our own?
If you look at that K-Camp, you'll think, what in the hell were you thinking?
Where is it? May I?
And then maybe you can review it, or. You haven't gotta go, so maybe.
That's fine.
But, uh.
We, we, but wait, I promised Ladonna, I'm gonna pick up her, uh, evaluations, and do we have any more evaluations that come, that came in?
I have some upstairs.
And then we have to set a special meeting. Remember, we were gonna do a whole special meeting, either handbook, so that we can.
It'll solve your handbook problem.
We still have a meeting here.
You'll find there's just a few pencil notes on the side that we need to check and verify.
But look at this thing, it's eight hundred pages.
As of right now, you guys have employee evaluations on your agenda? From one to four thirty, and again, on February seventeenth from one to.
Next Monday?
Or February eighteenth, yeah.
So it's the next two.
February tenth and the February eighteenth.
Does K-Camp also have employee evaluation forms, so that you can go across the board, be the same?
Well, that pink HR might.
Yeah.
I didn't even know they got that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Well, she said that, I'll comp, yeah, sure.
We got their ATO deal, yeah, K-Camp's got a whole deal on it.
That, that shrinks a lot when you get rid of all the.
We give them.
Empty space and all that stuff.
Want to review that and then just bring it back?
Where, did you print this off?
Yeah, but I got my notes on it, so read away, and where, where you see my notes on it, there aren't very many.
Okay.
Fix them, and then I'll be upstairs.
Okay.
For the, the known, for still the future.
Do you, you guys want to take over the agenda?
Do what?
You guys want to take over the agenda?
On the agenda?
I'll take it, yeah. I'll be up there in the morning, and we'll see what we gotta do.
Okay.
Now, I only, I had a question having that, and everybody's always calling you, and, or you're just gonna have to tell Jim then what's going on?
Well, I would just have to give a phone number to them to go over to.
Well, eventually, then, they'll quit calling you and call him. But that's him for a while yet, everybody's still gonna call you, 'cause they wanna get on.
Obviously, that's the same phone number she's at.
Okay.
He, he's like dead serious about moving in.
You're gonna have a new employee.
I start somebody.
You're gonna have a new employee up there, Dawn, when did I get around?
I hope not, before you get people up.
Okay, I don't, what do you think? Should Jim take over the agenda?
As a citizen, I think I have a little bit of reservation about one commissioner making a decision about who gets to speak to the commission. At least Dawn is. She, she.
Okay, excuse me, but she doesn't want to. So now what? 'Cause that's where we are. I'm not, I'm not trying to out you, I'm just saying, she doesn't wanna do it anymore. 'Cause I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, 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 then, well, then the.
The commission has to have a no refusal policy.
There would have to be that.
I, I just struggle, because everybody thinks it's me that says they're busy, they don't have time, and then they get angry at me.
No, you shouldn't have that. I, I'm just saying, you should say, these are the time slots, and which one do you want? Um, I, I just don't think that.
We would have to have a no refusal policy, because let's say I know that someone in my district is very angry, but I don't care about pleasing them at all, or your district for that matter.
But I'm not gonna see the same guy three days in a row, three meetings in a row, so there is gonna be some refusal policy.
But you can't do that, you can't make that decision. As an, as an individual person, which Dawn has reminded me of many times in the past, I have no power. The only power that happens is in session.
The person who has the most power is who has control of the agenda.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's a problem I have.
Well, okay, let, let's just be super critical of Dawn right now.
No, 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 I didn't mean that. I've, I've never been refused.
I know, I know. But let's be super critical of Dawn. I mean, what are you guys hearing? Because I don't wanna get emails demanding that change, times be changed, et cetera, because you guys aren't following the agenda, or holding to times, or people have extended. Because that was the accusation that I got, was I want the first time slot from now on, regardless of whether or not I already have people on the agenda, because you keep moving my agenda time. I don't move his agenda time. I've never moved the person's agenda time. I, well, I should say, two times has it been moved, one by the Board of County Commissioners, and the second one, because they canceled the meeting and, or, and they moved it back, that was the first one, in the Board of Commissioners building. And the second time was something that he already had on the agenda and was a part of. Um, I, I just, I feel like, and then I feel like sometimes people feel like that they're having to tell me what. Like, so, so basically, previous board has said, ask them what their subject matter is, and they tell you, they tell you, and they don't.
It should just be a topic, it should just be a topic, it should just be a topic.
Yes. And some will say yes, some will say no, others feel like I'm just prying.
Well, it should be a stimulus.
So that I can go to them and sway.
Roads, buildings.
And, and I don't care, I just, I don't wanna be openly criticized if, if I'm doing something wrong, I mean.
I'm not criticizing you about the agenda, I'm saying it should not be in the power of one person here to say, no, you can't get on.
Yeah.
Because how would you ever, how would, how would any of, if I was the person doing the agenda, and I just simply kept refusing this one person, they may or may not eventually come and complain, but those first handful of times that I refuse, how does anyone else know I'm refusing that person to get in front? What if it's a time-sensitive matter, and I'm just like, nah, nope, I don't wanna hear about your problems. I just, it is a.
Well, and how do you feel about if people have taken the time to get on the agenda?
I'll be there about fifteen minutes.
A, a department had tried to call and contact these people to move.
I don't have a problem with one of us doing it if there's a no refusal policy, but that doesn't mean you can always get them in on the, the week they want, unless it's time-sensitive, but.
How, how quick do you get? Maybe we can review during the meeting, the agenda in twenty-three.
I mean, I know what's on the agenda so far.
Like, you got, when you got.
He kinda asked for that when he first got on board, he wanted it a week ahead.
Well, you got a agenda. Well, Dawn, you got, uh, like, request for a week from now, two weeks from now, three weeks from now. We could get requests, and could call in, and you could bring them to us and say, and we could figure them out right here, as an item for our commissioner meeting.
Also, also, you're not breaking the cora, or the coma, by actually discussing agenda items.
No.
Right, just what's on.
So, so you guys could actually have a conference call, saying, these are the.
You could give us a list, saying, here's six people called in, one on the agenda, and you could bring them to us, and then we could figure out what, when they get on, what time they get on, this week, next week, or a week after.
That's not, that's not a coma.
True. As long as it's knowing, tend to make decisions about how they.
As long as it simply is what's going on the agenda.
Just like we put on Becky Rappin for, the later, because we said it's not that critical.
Well, then, why don't we just assign it to the chairperson, so that it stays in the cycle, that you don't have to keep choosing who?
I'll do it, I'll, assign it to me. You could put it, well, I don't wanna be the one person who assigns them either, 'cause I'll, for the same reason we said, I would bring it to.
But she's, she doesn't wanna do the secretarial work of keeping track of all the phone calls.
Well, well, yeah, you could have, just call me.
That's what you're saying, right? I understand that.
Well, I, I.
Well, that's fine.
I just don't want to be the one that.
That makes the decisions and then gets bitten.
Well, okay, so this, this is kinda what your guys' February tenth looks like, and, and I, I struggle with it, because I feel like this has. So we advertise ten to one, and how, how often have we really been meeting ten to one? Not at all. Uh, so I try to schedule people, you said block off ten to ten-thirty, so we have time to do correspondence, so I did that. So that leaves ten-thirty, ten-forty-five, and then we have Brendan at eleven, which is the standing appointment that has always been.
For the highway department, yeah.
And I've been doing a half an hour for him, because it seems like, but yet, if you notice, it's.
A lot of time is close to now, yeah.
We go over a lot.
So, so then we have, do we break for lunch, do we go into the afternoon, do we not go into the afternoon? I mean, what, what do you guys want the agenda to look like? Sorry, I can talk to Rick, 'cause I'm used to it.
This is even phased you.
So, so, you know, what do you guys want your agenda to look like? Do you wanna go into a little bit later? Do you wanna, like, not meet over the one?
Well, I don't. Start at nine instead of ten?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, eight, that's too late, we each start at eight.
I'm not going, no, I'm not.
I'm not a fan of eight either, 'cause.
It's fine where it is. We could just go later, what's wrong with this? And we don't know all these.
'Cause Dawn's working.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what to.
Well, we'll.
I'm trying to balance everybody's schedules and balance your guys' schedules.
Let's, may I suggest, let's go back for a couple weeks to doing two meetings a week like we did. We did that for quite a while, you and I.
I don't think we need to, we don't have that many issues that we have to right now. Do we?
We're gonna do evaluations over two weeks. Do you wanna do it all in one day, or do you wanna just get it up?
Well, okay, we can do, well, with evaluations right now, okay, we can go to two days a week. We can do the Monday, and then we can do, whatever day we want, but. And I could be a point of contact, and then I could bring it here, and we say, here's eight people, one on the agenda, and that's three can determine when they get on the agenda a week later, or two weeks, or three weeks later.
Well, let's just go ahead and schedule a special meeting because of the evaluations, 'cause here's the thing, we have not set up with the department heads a time slot to go over their employees. I mean, I assume we want them here. We can't really.
What do you wanna do, this week, next week?
So we have the tenth and the eighteenth.
Already scheduled.
So then, let's assign that. Mr. Gableman, would you please contact each department head and find them a time slot on the tenth from between one and four?
Okay.
And on the eighteenth between one and four, am I wrong?
Um, well, let me ask, no, you're not wrong, but are you going to do theirs during this timeframe?
No, let's do that at the special meeting, where we will also do the employee handbook. So the two afternoons that we set aside already for the next two meetings are all evaluations. Every department head needs to find a time slot between one and four on that Monday or the following Tuesday.
Tenth and the seventeenth, right?
And Mr. Gableman is gonna.
Seventeenth, basically.
Schedule it, it's the eighteenth, cause it's a president's day.
Oh, the eighteenth is the other, the day after.
To come in and the elected officials for their own departments, some time slot between one and four on the tenth or the eighteenth.
Okay.
And then why don't we just do the end of the month meeting on the twenty-eighth, and, and schedule it to be the handbook meeting?
I forgot, I'm gonna beat you out.
Oh, we can't do the, um, department, so we're gonna have to have payroll.
I'm not gonna be to the twenty-fourth, and then all week.
That's okay, that's payroll, we have to have it done for payroll anyway.
That's the day that we fit to do.
With payroll, the twenty-eighth is payroll, the last week, day, right? Payroll's the twenty-eighth of February.
Yes.
So, so kick that a week out, kick that in March.
We're gonna move, so we're gonna move, discuss services for the elderly to March second.
That's fine, I got, I'm gonna be out of town. All right, all right, we're gonna have up here in a minute anyway, okay.
So let's do the twenty-first of the Friday, is that okay before you leave, or are you gonna be gone twenty-first?
Uh, I'll be here.
Okay, so that would be a Friday, let's do a Friday.
Yeah.
Let's do the twenty-first of Friday morning, ten.
Friday, the twenty-first at ten.
And we will do our department head evaluations, cause that gives you time still to do payroll, correct?
Yeah, um, yeah, cause we.
Everybody else will be done, everybody else will be done, but the department heads will be the twenty-first and the handbook, so we'll plan on like ten to lunch.
Yes, let's do.
To do our own evaluations.
And I know, Dawn, you're doing a good job on the agenda, we've been, we're all over the place because we have a lot of different issues going on. It's hard to set a schedule one that's gonna be ten to three every week, and to have a lunch every week, I mean, you know, cause we go on and over.
Well, I feel bad if I keep you here till four and you haven't had a lunch, cause no offense, I'm starving.
Yeah, I know, well, we should have taken lunch, but here, here we get into this, we get off schedule, well, I just wanna take lunch today, we had a lunch, we could almost done. But the K-Camp guys kept going on and on, and, you know, what are you gonna do, cut them off and say, hey, you gotta get out of.
How long am I scheduling for each of the department heads for evaluations?
Depends on their size of their department, you would only need twenty minutes, you have one person.
Okay.
But, um, or, you know, fifteen, but I think the highway department's gonna need at least, I wanna say, two.
On the evaluation review, that's those two afternoons, what about the twenty-first, department heads?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like, an hour for each?
No, no.
Okay.
I think a half an hour max.
Okay.
So do fifteen, I think fifteen minutes, by the ti, well, but that's no, we have to do the evaluation and talk to them about it. They only need to come for fifteen minutes, we need a half an hour each, we need to do a fifteen-minute evaluation ourselves, then we need to have them come, so.
Okay, so if I schedule?
EMS, health department, highway department.
Appraiser.
Appraiser. No, she's elected.
Um, transportation bus.
Bus.
Doing about recycling, so. Landfill, noxious weed.
Landfill, noxious weed, and courthouse, janitorial, so that's at least eight. That's eight times fifteen.
That's basically two hours.
Okay, so.
Cause that's quarter hour.
Then schedule us a lunch, please, so let's do that, everybody comes in after lunch, how about that?
You'll do the employees first, and then you'll have them come.
We will do our own fifteen-minute segments for each department head for two hours, we'll take a lunch, and then ask them to schedule themselves for fifteen minutes that afternoon, in any particular order, because we'll have them all done.
What day's that, twenty-fourth?
That's the twenty-first.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we're gonna start what time, right, okay.
Ten to noon is us doing our own paperwork, then one, two, three.
That's fine.
Is fifteen-minute segments for each department head.
Yeah.
They can pick whatever fifteen minutes they want, we'll try to really stick to our time.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
And then tell Mr. Gableman to make all the phone calls to the department heads, if you wouldn't mind just giving them a list, and he can tell them they need to schedule themselves on the tenth or the eighteenth, from one to four.
I'll probably just like do in a calendar, and then give him the calendar and tell him to start.
Yeah.
Start filling.
And on the agenda thing, we went, started with here, I, you, I should be a point of contact, and you can just tell people, call me if you want. And then if you said, okay, then we figured it out, when that three figured it out.
During our correspondence, you can just update us.
Correspondence, I'll say, we've had five people on the agenda for next week or the week after, you and I, Jim, can determine when we wanna put them on. If it's not important, maybe two weeks out, if it's, you know.
And I think we can always tell people, come to the meeting, and if we can fit you, and we will, come toward the end.
Well, like, we got a Mr., we got Mr. Krackey in today.
Right.
Yeah, but that way, that three can do it, that's legal, and not one commissioner has power over at all. And it won't take that long, and we can, I think that's the best way to do it, that way, then we're fair, try to be fair to everybody.
I just think if you assign it to the chairperson, then.
I could do it, but then if I've made the decision, then everybody's saying, oh, I'm.
No, no, whoever's gonna field the phone calls, instead of.
Well, I'll take the field phone call, yeah, I'll field the phone calls, just tell them to call me.
I struggle because, you know, we have a lot of outside agencies that
Yeah.
That they're trying to get to every county, and
Right.
You know, I'm telling you, ten to ten forty-five, or eleven thirty to twelve.
Right.
One o'clock is kind of our open areas. But, and, and I don't have a problem moving the highway department to ten thirty, if that's what you guys want to do, but it seems like if anybody is off schedule, that tends to be the department that's off schedule, and so, um.
Well, we're gonna have to.
Well, we take for granted that it's every week, so we just.
Well, as a citizen, as a citizen, I think you should respect the fact that we're paying for his time here, so you actually should accommodate his time rather than the other way around, cause he's on the clock when he's here.
So are we, we're on the clock right now.
He's more on the clock, because.
But he, he, he don't have to go out and run a grader though this afternoon, he's, oh, he's got flexible schedule all day long. Brendan, what do you think he'd do now, probably sitting in the office.
No, I think he's actually researching how much something costs.
Well, that's wonderful, but.
No, I don't think he's got all this.
Well, I disagree with you, I think he should accommodate our schedule.
I, I will disagree.
Well, I'm sorry, I make decisions.
So.
What do you, we do?
See, I feel like if we're, if we're paid coming employees, that we should be able to, to be flexible and come whenever the schedule allows, because we have more flexibility than you as a citizen who's trying to get on the agenda, or an organization that's trying to get on the agenda, that's how I feel, and so that's why it's probably not fair that I do this, because that's how I feel, that doesn't mean it's right.
And the only time if we have an issue is if, say, we got an outside vendor, like insurance company, or they wanna come meet with us, or something like that, and they wanna meet next week, then we may have to call her and Jim maybe and decide or something, that would be only conflict.
Everybody waits, honestly, we say Thursday, but everybody waits till Friday morning to call to get on the agenda.
They want on Monday, probably.
Yes, so maybe that practice needs to change.
Well, what is.
Or, or you just call us on Friday afternoon, or send.
Of course, then that's a, well, then that's a, that's an open meeting, isn't it?
No, no, agenda building, agenda building is not a common issue.
Yeah, but if I ask, I did questions on whether we should book so-and-so on Monday, is it that coordinating information?
No, as long as you're not saying, and we're gonna give them money.
Well, or maybe with the subject matter is, or. I always like to ask them how long do they think that they need.
I think scheduling someone on the agenda has nothing to do with how you're gonna, how you're gonna financially distribute money. If we, if, if I get a text message that says, hey, I'm gonna fit them in on Monday, so we can hurry up and write them a check, that's a problem.
If you, if you say, I don't want this guy on the agenda because I don't like him.
That's a problem.
Well, we ain't gonna do that, we ain't gonna do that.
I'm just saying, if you got people on Friday morning that won't squeeze in, you can just send a message that says, this is what the agenda looks like, and send us the agenda, and then I can write no or yes, or, you know, I mean.
Yeah, we could, it, that, well, that wouldn't happen that often either, well, most of the time, we'll say, you got.
Speaking of the cora and the coma, has that, um.
Yes, I contacted their office, I have to schedule it, I kinda wanted to know, which, thank you for reminding me, I was gonna ask you that anyhow at some point. Um, if I, and I can do the, I can request the training, but can I, could we rent the finch, like, do I just go through you? Okay.
After hours.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Right, I can call you on my lunch. Okay, right, good lunch.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Cause it's, it's obvious it's needed.
Yeah, well, and I called their office, and I spoke to them, but they prefer that I schedule it online, just probably cause it makes their paperwork easier, so I'll do that. We already talked about it, so I don't think I need their permission again.
No, cause I need.
Scheduling the coma cora training from the Attorney General.
I think we have a lot of new employees.
Everyone can benefit from it, in fact, I wanted to mention that too, the new hospital administrator was questioned by one of the board members who relayed it to me that, and she said she was unfamiliar with it, so there's no harm in educating. Yes, but they. Yeah, it's not Kansas. Yes, yes.
Come every week, we've not had this much laughter ever.
Let's go. All right, move to Jared, I'm Jared.
Yes.